I didn't realize you were out there. I now call the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to everyone, including our superintendents in the back of the room, if you want to give a wave. Yesterday, today's agenda was approved yesterday, oh, and I was going to say, and Mark is walking in, so we have everyone present. And we have the Dr. Harwood show this morning, all morning long, starting with item two. Good morning.
Good morning, and I look forward to spending the morning with you as we go through a number of different things. I guess that it got the end, be the end last night, and then so most of the morning, so we'll get through things. So the first one we're going to start with is, well, it can actually lead into the second issue, and so this came up last year with USD four sixty-eight is Healy, and so that came up last year in the legislative section about Healy maybe not having any students. So more has developed with that, and so I want to make sure that the state board is aware of what's going on and what your role will be in the future, because one way or another, you will have a role. And so to kind of start with, I'm just going to start with regulations. So again, regulations are, are rules that were passed by the State Board of Education, and so KAR ninety-one thirty-one is part of the accreditation rules, and this is one section of it. But it says a district must, or a system must have at least ten students to be eligible for accreditation. So if a system gets below ten, they are no longer eligible to be accredited. And just so that we go back, when this regulation was originally put in place, you were accrediting buildings and not districts. So this was originally been for a building of ten. Now, one of the things that happens is that as districts get smaller, sometimes they have a K-12 building, so it's in essence the same thing. But that's how it started. So then, if a district is not accredited or is not eligible for accreditation, then there are certain sanctions that the, there are different things that the board can do. And so in this case, a current regulation which would say that non-accreditation goes through the arc. But if you're not eligible for accreditation, then you would also not be in good standing. So when you look at KAR ninety-one thirty, thirty-one forty, sanctions may be applied if the, if a system is not accredited or conditionally accredited or fails to stay in good standing. So this is what the, the board could do, again, because sanctions may be applied. So then with, if we look at what those sanctions are, you could recommend that personnel get moved around. In this case, I don't know that that would be a viable option. Again, this one goes back to when we were looking at system or at buildings. And so you could make a recommendation that the district move people around within the, the district to support particular buildings. But that would not be relevant in this case. You can recommend a technical assistance team, which I'll actually come back to as an option. That could be, and what this would be is that based on whatever reason the district, district or system is not in good standing or not accredited, you could appoint a technical assistance team to help them rectify the situation. You could recommend, recommend to the legislature of a reduction in state aid. This again is a pretty old one, which may have complications with recent Supreme Court rulings. Because in essence, what you would recommend to the legislature is that we stop sending, sending them state aid, and then they have to make it up with local revenues. With the equity issues that have come up with current court cases, this may be a regulation that wouldn't stand up in the end. The next one is that you could recommend to the legislature abolish or restructure the public education, the system. So you can, you can make a recommendation to the legislature that they abolish the district or system. You can't do that on your own. You can only make a recommendation to do that or restructure it in some way. And I think restructure could be like a forced consolidation versus a disorganization. We'll talk, we can talk more about those later as well. Or you can send a letter to the press that says this district is no longer accredited or in good standing, and then let the public decide what to do about it. So those are, those are the options that you have when it comes to districts not being accredited. And so this came up quite a bit in conversation with just people across the state. When this came up is that if you're not eligible for accreditation, does that mean you don't get funding? The answer is no. Funding is not tied to accreditation. Again, there is that one option where you could put something into it if you suggested that to the legislature. But again, the state board can't do that. You have to make that recommendation to the legislature. So part of this is to kind of help you guys understand if you start getting questions in the future. There's not a lot you can do about consolidation or disorganization. Now, we're going to talk in a minute. You are the final arbiter of any decisions that get made on that. So disorganization and consolidation can't happen without you. But the only thing you can do to start it is to make a recommendation to the legislature, right? So if we talk specifically about Healy, on September twentieth, Healy reported less than ten students. And I will say it was significantly less than ten students, but we don't report numbers that are less than ten, so it's less than ten. This is not a, this is not something that is new. You can see that since two thousand and sixteen, Healy has dropped significantly in, in enrollment. And I will say this is, and we'll talk more about in the next section a little bit, but this is kind of indicative of, of small districts, especially once they close their high school and, and contract out for high school services. And I will say that this is a bigger issue if there are, are other options nearby. So later on, we'll talk a little bit about being small is different if there are other districts to go to versus if there aren't. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the next item on the agenda. So this is where it just kind of comes up with what will happen with the state board. November fifth, the voters of USD four sixty-eight, so in, I can't remember if it's June or July, the, the Healy Board of Education decided to put on a public ballot the disorganization of the district. And so in doing that, it's disorganization and attach. So the ballot measure was to disorganize the Healy District and attach to the Scott County District. And that passed ninety-six to forty-three, okay? So that's what's in place right now. Now, there's another, there's actually two more steps. The first one is that once USD four sixty-six Scott County gets the certification from the Lane County Election Office, they have thirty days to decide whether they're going to accept that or not. Because Scott County could say, yeah, no, we don't want to do that. Every indication we have is that they've talked about this ahead of time, and that's what's going to happen. The state board, then, the statute says that if Scott County says yes, we'll take them, they will notify us. And within thirty days, the state board shall issue an order, which basically is in line with what the ballot initiative was. So the, one of the reasons I wanted to make sure I talk about this now is we could get that, if we, if we get that notification before the December election, you're going to have to do it in December because you won't have thirty days. In some ways, if it's going to happen, I hope it happens that way, because that way I've already explained it to this board, and that will make it easier with the next one. And so Scott Gordon, if I have talked about this, and if it happens in that way, I mean, this could happen on the consent agenda, because you really have no choice. And quite frankly, if you did have a choice, you would be saying, we know better than what the electors of the, of the district knew. So that's kind of the situation we are in. If Scott County does reject it, again, which I don't think is, is going to happen, we would be coming back and talking about, do you want to impose one of the other sanctions? And that a technical assistance team. So in that case, the technical assistance team, we could help the, the Healy Board talk about, okay, well, that option didn't work. What's the next option? How can we help you do that? Or you could make a recommendation that the, to the legislature that they get disorganized. The other ones, or you could, you could opt to do nothing as well. It is May at that point. The rest of the options for sanctions just either don't apply because of just the situation this is in or just don't make as much sense, but we could talk about those at this time. So any questions just about what the board may have to do with Healy in the future?
So is school actually taking place in Healy right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, so just as a reminder, there was a, there was legislation passed last year that said if a district does not have students enrolled and attending, then we don't send state aid. So at that point, the Healy District knew that they couldn't just contract out for all their students. So yes, it, I mean, well, I should say on September twentieth, they reported that they had less than ten students that were enrolled and attending Healy Schools.
So all these decisions will affect the next school year, not this current school year.
So that, actually, that would be true. So your order has, would, would, has to go into effect on July one after the election. So yes, it, nothing will change for this school year. They're actually getting funded based on an average of the previous two years enrollment, which is much higher than ten, to about, it's about thirty, twenty-seven or so. So yeah, they, they are still functioning this year with, with their current enrollment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Any other questions? I think we're good.
All right. So next, we're just going to go with a kind of a, just some background and history on what's happened with consolidations and those kinds of things over time. And then we're going to talk about kind of the current state statewide. So Gabrielle Hull is going to take you through the, the history lesson that she put together, and then I'll come back up and talk about current stats.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to say, this question was pretty exciting for me when Dr. Harwood brought it down to me. In my work with the legislature, we work a lot with now and in the future, and this was a little bit different looking at the past. So I'm going to, I broke my research into pre-unification, unification, and then post-unification, which I'll admit now overlap significantly. But then Frank will take over and give you a synopsis of where we're at in the present. So education in Kansas started similarly to most states. The original state constitution was written in eighteen sixty-one, and it did note the responsibility of the state to provide a uniform system of common schools of higher grades to ensure the state's social and emotional well-being. However, Kansas didn't see broad establishment of log schools or one-room schoolhouses until the eighteen seventies. And then the first State Board of Education was established in eighteen seventy-three. That did look quite different than our current state board. It consisted of the state superintendent and four state college or university presidents. They did not have any policymaking authority, and their real sole purpose was to certify teachers and administer those teaching exams. The state did start to discuss standardizing education in the late eighteen seventies. By then, the first compulsory attendance law had been passed, although that was really limited to students that were aged eight to fourteen and really only applied to three to four months of a school year. So governance was generally overseen by our local boards and administrators throughout the nineteen hundreds. Moving into our pre-unification period, the State Department of Education was first established in nineteen fifteen. That department looks quite a bit different than what we currently have. At that time, the state superintendent did not have any authority over the department, and the state board did not have an administrative arm to oversee the department. So they were really seen as separate entities. There was restructuring done, and the agency looked more similar to our current structure in the nineteen forties. Specialists were also added in curriculum to the department in the nineteen fifties to provide teachers with instructional guidance. And at this point in time, until the nineteen fifties, there were over two thousand school districts. So going into the later nineteen fifties, there was a study conducted regarding the education system, which led to restructuring in the nineteen sixties with the amendment of Article Six in the state constitution, which everyone is very familiar with now. These amendments did separate the responsibility of the State Board of Education and the state superintendent, as it was titled at the time. It established degree standards for Kansas teachers, and a constitutional amendment provided for an elected state board of education, which will feel much more familiar. They did have jurisdiction over elementary, secondary, and vocational education, as well as junior colleges. And finally, that amendment granted the authority for the State Board of Education to appoint the state commissioner of education, replacing that position of the state superintendent. The State Board of Education also first started accrediting schools in nineteen fifty-nine, and they adopted a high school classification system. Moving into unification. Simultaneously, while they were restructuring the oversight of K-12 schools in order to address the large number of school districts, there were still over two thousand at the time, and to improve the quality of education, unification was discussed over many, many legislative sessions before they came to a cohesive plan that was adopted in nineteen sixty-three. That law required the state superintendent at the time to approve each significant procedure to ensure constitutionality and required school districts to offer quality instructions in grades one through twelve, with kindergarten as an option to be decided by each school district. The consolidation legislation divided the state into a hundred and six planning units. Each county had one planning unit with the exception of Johnson County, who had two. The planning units were required to form one or more school districts per county, each of which must meet one of two requirements. They either had to have an enrollment of at least four hundred students in grades one through twelve or at least two hundred square miles and an assessed valuation of at least two million. And after a very long process, a statewide vote did initially approve a recommendation for three hundred and eleven unified school districts. Consolidation, the unification process wrapped up in the mid nineteen sixties. So I think nineteen sixty-three was the election for those three hundred and eleven school districts. The size of school districts and the importance of providing equal opportunities for students continued to be of concern. And in nineteen ninety-nine, the legislature passed SB one seventy-one, which required a study to be conducted on school district organization. The study was aimed to analyze efficiency of Kansas school districts and to make recommendations on potential reorganization approaches. They identified school districts that were too small or too large and districts that had spending higher than expected based on student outcomes. Augen, Blick, and Myers were commissioned to complete that study because I know I will mess up one or both of those names. I'm going to call it the A and M study from here on out. And it was commissioned according to that nineteen ninety-nine legislation by the State Board of Education. The, they made recommendations for school districts to consolidate or disorganize and recommended some revisions to statute. They made specific recommendations to the state board to consider boundary changes through emergency dissolution. So districts with less than eighty students in two thousand or less than one hundred students in two thousand and one and declining enrollment were recommended to be dissolved. They also recommended required boundary change planning. That would include a combination of low student performance and high per pupil spending. And they identified twenty-eight districts that fit in that category. And those districts would have three years to improve. If they did not improve in that three-year period, they were recommending to follow the emergency dissolution process. And then they also recommended a review be done of boundary options for all school districts identified as target districts in their report. And then finally, they had some recommendations for the legislature. Specifically, they recommended the legislature amend statute to eliminate any financial disincentives to consolidation. Also included in that legislation was language that created a process to hold school budgets harmless for two years if they voluntarily consolidated. And that bill also allowed for non-contiguous consolidation. Currently, that home, hold harmless provision extends from two to four years, depending on the size of the school districts that are involved in that process. And over the years, the legislature has proposed several amendments. Specifically in two thousand and seventeen, there would have actually been a financial incentive to provide higher state foundation aid for six years after a voluntary consolidation, but none of those amendments have passed. At the time of the A and M study, there were three hundred and four school districts. And after that study was completed, over the next ten years, fifteen more school districts were consolidated or disorganized. And we revisited the topic again in two thousand and ten. The Legislative Division of Post Audit picked up that responsibility, and they did a study specific to cost savings. And that one really did differ from the A and M study because they were only looking at cost savings while A and M was also looking at student outcomes. So Post Audit developed two sets of criteria to identify potential districts for consolidation. The first scenario attempted to consolidate any school districts that did not, at the time of the audit, meet the original unification requirements. Under that scenario, Post Audit identified thirty-two school districts, and they proposed combining them with neighboring districts to get them over the minimum enrollment or square mile thresholds, whichever they were under. In total, fifty-six school districts would have consolidated down to twenty-eight under that scenario. And then they proposed a second scenario, which would have attempted to consolidate any school district that had less than sixteen hundred students. They provided a couple reasons for why they picked that threshold. The largest was that in their analysis, they noticed that spending per student decreased as size increased until you reached about fifteen hundred to two thousand students. Then things seemed to even out, and the additional over that amount was negligible. So under that scenario, there was a substantial amount of school districts that would have been consolidated. They would have taken two hundred and forty-two districts down to a hundred, leaving us with a total of a hundred and fifty-two school districts. So under both scenarios, the state's costs would have decreased significantly. That would primarily be due to the fact that most school districts would no longer qualify for the low enrollment waiting. They also included a finding that the state could be more aggressive with incentives to voluntarily consolidate. But they noted in their audit, since it was on cost savings, that would increase the state's costs. And finally, they did recommend amending statute related to districts in our local agreements. They recommended that it limit the number of years school districts can share entire grades. They alternatively recommended eliminating that provision entirely to allow school districts to contract out entire grades of their school. Since the Post Audit was released in two thousand and ten, there have been seven additional disorganizations or consolidations. I will not read each to you, but some of those school districts will be familiar, and some of them were ones that were identified in one or both of the consolidation studies. And then since two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school year, no additional districts have consolidated or disorganized. And I'll hand it over to Frank.
All right. So that gives you a little bit of the histories. Now we're going to talk about kind of where we are now and what you might expect going forward. So first, we're going to talk about our enrollment trends. And so Gabby is actually handing out to you from nineteen twenty, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty through twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the enrollments. I will say that the, the, these are for each of the districts in your, in your area. It's hard to say it's in your district, but it's a district in your district, which gets confusing. And we also then, because we're going to talk later on about non-resident enrollment and open enrollment, we have some information that I'll point out for that. But the important thing that you look at statewide is that there has been a decrease in student headcount, which makes sense when you look at just all the demographics of lower birth rates. And this goes on with what's in Kansas. But you'll notice that the FTE, which is the yellow line above, the weighted FTE, has not seen the same decrease. That's primarily due to increases in at-risk and career and technical education. So even though there are fewer students, the weighted FTE, which is where you add in all the waitings, has not decreased, has actually increased slightly. Went down into the, from, through the pandemic, and then has, has crept back up a little bit since then. All right. So then, this is where we're going to talk about the, this is the, the danger of handing you something to look at when you're trying to talk to somebody. So we're going to talk a little bit about the impact of open enrollment, which is, so I'll explain a little bit what's on your, on the sheet. So there are about twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty K-12 students that attended a non-resident school district in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that means that twenty-four thousand students were enrolled in a district other than the one that they lived in, okay? That is actually down from last year. So there were more in twenty-three, twenty-four than there are in twenty-four, twenty-five. And so of those students, the decrease was about two hundred and twenty-four students. One thousand five hundred and nineteen non-resident students took advantage of open enrollment. So only six percent of all the students that are attending a district other than the one they reside in are using open enrollment to do that. And there's actually a decrease in non-resident transfers with open enrollment. Yeah.
Well, before I forget that thought, do you think that's because the, they had to come up with a policy? The, the legislation forced them to come up with a policy and a percentage, and that had to be done right away so that the public knew? had to be done right away so that the public knew that. And then they did that right away and then they knew only, we could only take in 72 kids or we could only take in, and then they just decided it wasn't worth it.
So I, I do think that, uh, for districts that were already accepting non-resident transfers.
Yes.
Uh, the open enrollment policy and especially the part then that made it so that they had a right to stay in that district for, until, until they graduated, made some districts more cautious about how many students they would say they could accept. And this first year, I do believe that was, would be, I, I think there were districts that were being cautious because they just didn't know how it was going to work out.
Yeah. I mean, some districts are still growing and they were like, we just, we have to.
And, and districts that weren't taking non-resident transfers other than staff members, which was typically the case.
Right.
Um, especially knowing that they're growing, understand that maybe I do have room at the elementary level, but I don't know that I'm going to have room at the middle school or the high school. So they may have, they, they may have set their capacities with that in mind and then therefore took fewer. So yes, I, I think especially in this first year, the, uh, from talking to districts about it, I think the open enrollment policies made districts more cautious about how open they were going to be to take non-resident transfers. And I think that shows out and now what, how that continues based on, well, now I know how it works, we'll, we'll have to see in, in the coming years.
Yeah. Cause they just don't know from.
Right.
You just don't know the movement and everything. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Michelle, I think what Frank said overall is extremely important. School districts that took students prior to the law had, that local board had total control over who they took and how long they took them. And they lost all that when the law went into effect. And so there was a real cautious approach by those districts saying, well, we're, we don't know if we're going to take the, because once we, and, and so as Frank said, it may go back up.
Yeah.
It may stay, it may hamper. I don't know if we know that in the future, but I think if you just listen in general, people that were taking, uh, in, in 23 and 24, I think felt you've taken away our power to really do this in the way that we wanted to do it.
Well, and, and people don't always realize that that board doesn't represent them if they live in another tax paying, does it's, it's, uh, it's taxation without representation. If you've got a board there that you've elected and then they're supposed to be listening to you as a, as a, as a voter, um, and you live in a different paying, tax paying district, you know, to, you know, 16, 15, 20 miles down the road that they, you don't elect that board. So your, your buy-in for that community and for that school that resides in your district is going to be way different than the one that you're actually, your child is attending.
And I think that shows up especially in accepting elementary students because you may have, you may have room for them as elementary students, but you don't want to be a position where now you have to pad capacity at the middle school. So now you need a bond issue, uh, that you need people to pass because you took too many non-resident students. That's going to be, it's going to be a difficult sell, but now these, these students have a right to stay till they graduate. So you've got to figure it out. So yes, that's exactly what made districts more cautious about how they set their capacities.
So just to make sure I'm totally hearing you, and I think you just said it, but if they take them, they cannot refuse them later.
So i- if, if you accepted student under open enrollment, they have a right to stay until they graduate unless they became a, become a student not in good standing. And not having room is not, not in good standing because it has to be student behavior. It can't be changes in the district. So if you look at the, uh, the document that, uh, Gabrielle handed out to you, what you see there is that you see the, the total enrollment, and this is headcount. So, and we went with headcount in this situation because when you're just looking at the number of people, that makes more difference than the FTE. So you see the headcount for the year and then you'll see a net gain or lost based on the non-resident transfers. And so if you see that it says gained or lost, what that meant is that there were less than 10 that went in one direction or the other. So, uh, we, we didn't want to, if we have to break it up to do the math, so you, you'll be able to, to see that, uh, they gained or lost, but, um, I mean, so you might see that the net was like negative one. Well, that meant that there could have been 12 and 13, which we could report. And so the net is fine. So that's how that works out. And then in the last column for the 25, you'll see open enrollment and you'll see, uh, how many of those non-resident students by district are there for open enrollment. Uh, and a lot of those are less than 10 because they just, there were fewer than 10 of them or that way. So, uh, that's how that's kind of sits out. And again, that's for all of the, the districts that are in your board district. Okay. Uh, and I will say that, uh, the, uh, the net gains and losses are only to public schools. Uh, we don't know net gains and losses to homeschool and those kinds of things. So these are only to other public schools. And the way we find that out is that a different public school reported them enrolled. So that's how we figure out how, how they got, who, who they lost them to. All right. So any questions before I move on just about, um, the, the information you've been given? All right. So when we look at the current status statewide, so we have a, we have a big range and this is what's going to be important as we start looking at, how do you come up with solutions? And one of the problems we have with solutions are just, there's just so much variability. So our largest district, uh, in September reported over 43,000 students. And as we already talked about, the smallest district reported less than 10. So the average is 1547. It wasn't that long ago, two years ago, where the average was actually over 1,600. And so when Gabrielle talked about low enrollment waiting, any district that is below 1,620 is eligible for low enrollment waiting. So half of our districts, more than half of our districts are eligible for low enrollment waiting. All right. So an average district would be considered low enrollment. The median is 491, and this has come down from over 500 over the last several years. And so what this shows us is that our school districts on average are getting smaller. So this issue with Healy will, will come up again just because of the nature of the way the headcounts are going.
But you're showing us FTEs, so those, that's not number of kids.
Uh, that is correct. This is F, um, it is FT, yeah, it is FT. So it's, it's who they're, how they're funded. That is correct. Yeah. All right. Uh, and that's because that's how the low enrollment waiting is calculated is based on FTE. All right. Uh, but this is, this is FTE, not weighted FTE. So this would be part-time students, not, doesn't include all of the waitings. So if a student, uh, so like a, a pre-kate student, this is just going to go to 12, but if a student only attends half day, they would get counted as point five versus the other one, which is total headcount. This does not, this is not weighted FTE, which would include, uh, the low enrollment waiting and CTE and all those other kinds of things. Okay. Yeah. All right. Um, so the largest 50 districts educate 73% of our K-12 students and the smallest district educate 2%. So again, this is where we get into the, just the, the huge variability. But some of that is, has to do with our state. And so, um, Gabrielle talked about the, um, the LPA study that said there were 32 districts. These are 27 districts that if we were going with the 1963 law, would not be allowed to form because they have less than 400 students or less than 200 square miles. We took out the $2 million worth of valuation because we didn't want to have to calculate what the inflation would be on that. And also with equalization, valuation doesn't make the same difference as it did before. And I kind of intentionally made it hard to see the, the districts themselves because we really want to talk about the, the situation we're in. When, um, when you start looking at individual districts is where the conversation gets really difficult. Because as you heard in the summer about, um, uh, with the, some of the, uh, um, boundary changes and those kinds of things, building closures, consolidations is really hard to do. All right. So that's really why I just want to talk about, if we had the 1963 law, then, um, we have 27 districts that would not be allowed to be, to form.
I want to point this out too. I think we often think when the, the consolidation word comes up, we're talking about Western Kansas. And this map clearly shows that that's not true.
Yeah.
That, that the, that the area that, as we see declining enrollment, we're talking rural Kansas, which obviously you can see in central and eastern also applies, uh, to the, to the 1960s law, if we were to go back to the original unification law. So when you talk to patrons, uh, they're going to assume you're talking about Western Kansas. That is, uh, cause I, I hear that all the time. Well, you know, these kids are going to have to be on a bus forever. Uh, we're not, I mean, look at, look at most of Western Kansas, we're not talking about.
And actually this, this, uh, this next slide illustrates that pretty well. So when you just look at low enrollment districts, we are talking a lot about Western Kansas because this are, these are the districts that have less than 100, uh, in the orange and less than 200 students in, uh, the yellow. But as Randy talked about, it's a lot different if you have over 600 square miles, which these two districts have versus other districts that have less than 100 square miles. And the solutions are very different based on how far it takes to go, which is why, when you looked at the, uh, LPA study and I saw several of you cringe saying, we're going to go down to 100 districts, some of those districts would be huge and unmanageable geographically. Some of them would be huge with a number of students. So, uh, I, I don't believe that a kind of one-size-fits-all solution is going to work. So, um, now what we've done is we've just kind of said, this is what's going on. So we get to the what's next part. Okay. And I, I don't have answers. These are more questions. But the first thing I'll say is that consolidation, as Gabrielle pointed out, they've been talking about it for over a hundred years. All right. It's, it's been a conversation for a hundred years and nothing has really been done in the last 50. So since the consolidation in 1963, they've had a couple of studies, but they really haven't done anything. And most of this, I say they is the legislature, although there are some things that the state board could consider. And really your lever is accreditation. And so right now we talk about the, the, you're, you have a regulation that says that a system is not eligible for accreditation if it's under 10 students. You could consider addressing regulations or accreditation in some way that says, well, when you get below a certain number of students, we need to have another conversation about, you know, what are you doing to make sure you're providing quality, uh, uh, instructional opportunities for your students, uh, or how are you functioning? And again, that will be a different answer if you are, if you have, I mean, our largest district is over 900 square miles. That's a long trip. So, um, that's a, that may have a different answer and we may have to come up with ways, how can we support those districts that are, don't have any other choice but to be small in providing educational opportunities?
In, in fact, again, we all know this, but I want to drill that point that Frank just made to us. The formula is built on enrollment. And it, and it stops at 100 students on low enrollment. There are school districts that, uh, I've visited recently that they are the only thing within seven, eight, 900 square miles, but there's nothing in the formula that gives them extra funding other than their enrollment. Does that make sense? They're not formulated based on efficiency of size or any, and, and yet you would say, and I, I said to those superintendents, you, we need a school here because to serve those kids, they would be driving 60, 70 miles to the next school district in some cases, uh, in order, in order to get served. And I don't think a lot of people think about that when they think about consolidation because they're, they're just thinking about, well, they can easily go to another school district. And that's true in some cases. It's not true in others. And there's nothing, again, in the formula that speaks to that density.
Uh, Dr. Randy, what does the, uh, transportation waiting, how, how would that work into the formula? I mean.
Well, you're, you, you get transportation waiting if you're over two and a half miles from that school. It's just a matter of how long are you going to transport someone? And where, where's that building and district located out in that district?
So part of the transportation waiting has to do with sparsity. And so, uh, one of the things we calculate for every district is how many students they have per square mile. And that is, I mean, so the, the, the less dense or more sparse your district is, the more transportation waiting you are eligible for. Uh, transportation is waiting is, or transportation is waiting is then based on costs. And so it does recognize that transporting fewer students, longer distances is more expensive than shorter distances. I don't know that there's been much of a study based on how does that really relate to the actual cost, uh, and how does it, you know, what, what portion of those costs are being made up? But there, there is some of that built in to the formula, uh, for transportation.
Take one more?
Yeah, I do. So, uh, one of the things, just on this part, one of the things I was going to point out is that when you look at, uh, the information that we, we've given, uh, parents are solving the adequate, uh, education opportunity issues differently based on their options. So when you look at some of your districts that are small, if they are in a place where there is another option nearby that can offer those opportunities, you'll see where some of those districts are, have a net loss in non-resident transfers. Whereas other districts nearby may have a net gain. And so if there's another option, parents are making some choices. If there's not another option, then you'll see that you don't get a lot of loss or gain that way. So you'll, you'll see that. So some of those, if, even if you don't know where the district is, when you see that net loss or gain, you'll have some idea of how close they are to other things. So, and some of that also has to do with where the buildings are in, within the district. Because if you have a 900 square mile district, but the building is on the edge, well, you're still transporting a long ways anyway. All right. So then the next thing would be, uh, just for the legislature, uh, the legislature could consider a current funding formula aimed at addressing district size. This has to do with a little bit with what, uh, Dr. Watson was talking about. Are, um, are we funding really small districts that are sparsely populated well enough? Are we doing enough to help, uh, districts make a choice to consolidate if that really should be a better option for their communities? Uh, and so that's some of the things they could look at.
I've got Anne ahead of you still, so waiting to go to questions until Frank's ready.
Yeah, I'm ready.
He's ready. I remember the post audit, because I was on the post audit committee when that came out. And I, we just looked at it and said, I mean, the question we gave them was, show us how to save money. And they did. And it was so clinical and, you know, like, yeah, I could save weight by cutting off my feet, you know, but I'm not doing that. So I remember they had like this district would combine with this district and we're going, well, that ain't happening, you know? So it's more than just numbers. It's social, it's community, it's all that stuff. And that's why it doesn't happen very often because it's really, really hard. I remember there were two high schools here in the same district and the board voted to combine the two high schools. And the next election, they unelected the board and undid that right before school started. So it's, you know, there's emotion too. So it's, it's really, really tough. And I'm, it's like you said, the problem's not really out West, although I think there are more things we could think about, like K-12 buildings that are very, very small rather than trying to haul kids 100 miles to get to a high school. But I'm wondering about, you know, Dr. Schrock used to come in all the time and go, if you've got a district less than 100 kids, you're not providing the kind of education they're going to need for the 21st century. But I, I'm wondering if it isn't time to maybe run some numbers and see if there is a difference in, um, performance by these very small schools, or maybe you guys have already done that.
So I, I think that's kind of, it's, it's going to be really important how you ask that question. Uh, when you look at state assessment scores, we, we have some very small districts that are very high performing. The other part of that question are, um, other educational opportunities for, um, you know, advanced, you know, offering advanced courses, offering more CTE. Those are the kinds of things that get much more difficult. I mean, if you have quality teachers and engaged students and families, you're going to get good results on the state map and state science assessment. There are other opportunities that larger districts are able to op, offer because of efficiencies and size that others can't.
Right.
And so that's what we talk about is that if a family lives in an area where they can reasonably get to one of those other opportunities, they're making that choice because they can with, with non-resident enrollment. But for, for some other families, that's not going to be a viable choice to go someplace else. So how do we, I mean, what, what can we do to help do some of those?
I just wonder if there's any data, not just assessment scores, but ACT scores and post-secondary attainment, because I know that some of those smaller districts are the ones like their post-secondary is like, you know, in the tank or they just, they just don't go on. But there are a lot of things to look at, but in virtual schools too. I remember one time I visited Lawrence and at the time they had 400 virtual students, but they were almost all in Western Kansas because they didn't want to drive 50 miles to get to the school. So they were homeschooling using Lawrence's virtual school.
I, I should have added, on the information we're given, we took out virtual students because it. because it, I mean, it just it it impacts enrollment very differently. So the numbers you have are head counts of of in-person students.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Betty?
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's just a quick question. The break even number for efficiency, was that 1,500 or 1,600? No, well, I'm wanting the break even for efficiency. What was that number?
So post audit set it at 1,600. Part of that was because the cost started to even out between 1,500 and 2,000. But a large portion of that is also where the low enrollment waiting cutoff is. So they took that into account and increased it to be closer to that low enrollment cutoff of just over 1,600. So it was 1,600 is the short answer.
Okay, and then after that, it became minute?
Yes, the costs were negligible after that.
All right, thank you.
And Kathy?
I'm just going to throw this out there. On the rural schools, at least in my district, we're seeing a lot going on, has been for several years of these multi-career showcases, bringing businesses in to help students understand what's in their backyard and businesses that are very willing to help educate them financially while they're working for. I mean, I was just amazed as I got to step into one recently and I was just like, wow. I mean, I literally had no idea all these businesses were right there in southwest Kansas. And I'm sure a lot of them didn't. So just speaking to the people who are doing that, like, it it's it's a big deal and they're working very hard to make sure students understand what is very close to them and the opportunities these businesses are willing to give them. A, to hopefully keep them in their area, but that they can get post-secondary education while working, while going in whatever direction they want to go in and be able to stay in the rural community. So it was there's a lot happening.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that that is that is, I mean, beyond education, just demographic shifts in population are something that state needs to deal with. And quite frankly, if if the state beyond education says, we need to do things to grow small-town rural communities, education will have to be a part of that conversation because we know that one of the reasons that people move to particular areas, especially if they have children, is the educational opportunities for their children. And so without those educational opportunities, and this is what makes consolidation and disorganization such a difficult conversation is a lot of communities feel like when when that school closes, our town will die. And so that that that's what makes this so hard is that the school in many of these situations, and quite frankly, it was made that way from, you know, the 1800s when the school not only was the one-roomed schoolhouse, it was also the community center and it was where people gathered. And so schools over time have in many ways become a hub of a community, which puts the emotional piece to it. And as Anne talked about, when when LPA did their study, the question was, how do we save money? If that's the only question, the the answer is simple. I don't think the results educationally will be good, but the the question has to be broader than that.
I want the board to also be thinking as as we see, again, low birth rates, which are happening nationwide, but also in Kansas and we'll have we're projected to have fewer students. So this trend will continue. What we're the school finance formula never anticipated having school districts less than 100. They just they thought they would consolidate. And now we have how many?
11.
What happens then is if you're under, I'm going to use 200, you're operating pretty well. I mean, thanks, you're doing a when you hit 100, you're one event away from probably not operating. And we've seen two school districts that's happened to where all of a sudden you have to close a high school or three families move out of your community and you can get in it or or staff leave you. And if you don't have a plan, it can tailspin on you in a hurry. And then you start getting phone calls about what's going to happen and how are you going to solve this? Because the local people haven't had discussions about this about solving. Does this make sense? And with 11 school districts, Frank is asking them, start having conversations because something could happen to you. And we've seen this happen in literally in 30 to 60 days that you can go from 100 to 50 or 40. And then staff leave you. And then all of a sudden, it becomes really hard to operate. And then everyone's looking at you to try to solve the the issue. And it's and it's very contentious. And this, so these aren't easy, as Frank laid out. None of these are easy decisions. But I want to encourage you to to for the local districts to have this conversation. The vote that Healy took, if Scott County takes a similar vote, guess what your decision gets to be? It's really easy. Two communities decided this was what was best and they're going to go do it. You saw what happened last spring when they don't agree. And so that's that's, you know, that's really difficult at your because then you're playing judge and jury with emotions and all kinds of factors, so.
Is there a greater challenge, though, when you have the small district? That's you mentioned some that are just very high performing. It it seemed like it would be more challenging if those were the circumstances that you're looking at because you might feel that that high performance is coming basically from the size.
So I would say that there's a lot that goes into high performing. One of them is a culture of high performance. Typically, the the problem, I think, that we're talking about is that even a really high-functioning, high-performing district, when they get small enough, because of the way the funding formula works, get to a point where they they can't afford to keep going. And it's just that your your scale gets, I mean, you just you you get so limited on funding that it becomes a problem. So if that's going to be a factor, we need to have that be a factor. But I will say that, again, high performing also goes with the ability in the community's eyes to provide the opportunities that they want. And I I won't, I mean, I'm not going to, I don't think this is going to come as a surprise, but that a lot of times when when a district closes and contracts out for its high school, now or or they get to the point where they can't offer, you know, basketball and football and all those kinds of things, though that should not be the major factor and they still may be academically high performing, people start seeking out those opportunities in other places, which just continues to spiral the decline. So there there are a lot of factors in there. I guess I I do want to say publicly before I leave because in a former role, I got to be the face of a building closure and that's never makes you a popular person. I mean, I graduated from a small high school, 33 in my graduating class. So and I I know what it's like to be in a small district. Now, it was in eastern Kansas. And I I think that our small schools do provide some, I mean, are some of them are providing great learning opportunities. What this comes down to is some conversations about the, I mean, some of it is is efficiencies. I mean, as LPA pointed out, the legislature could save money if we consolidated more schools. I don't think that wholesale that is a great idea. I think a lot of local communities are going to be faced with the 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 facts of, how do we provide the best learning opportunities for our students? And does that include a consolidation or disorganization? Healy made that difficult decision. And talking to folks out there, they've known this was coming for a long time, but it's such a hard decision, it probably went on a year or two too long. And we're going to see other districts that are going to be faced with that. And so when we talk about, you know, my slide says what's next, we're not doing, I mean, this is Gabrielle and I are, you know, this is kind of the end of the project until somebody says, okay, now work on this. So all we've really done is kind of admired the the problem from the past and pointed out the current situation. But without change in regulation or statute, things continue to go along. And so for the state board, what that means is that you may see more situations like what's coming in Healy where they've made a decision and had a vote and moved on. The other option for disorganization is that the board decides we're going to disorganize without a community vote. And that comes to you to decide how to divide up the district. They they can make recommendations, but it's your decision in the end. And so part of that, what we would talk about with some of those questions are, I mean, if that's what the end result is going to be, how can the community be involved in making that decision? And some of that, communities, if they're going to go that direction, have to understand that's where it's going soon enough that they have time to go through that process because it's not fast and it and it's certainly not easy. So I just want to be on the record saying I'm not against small schools. I think they they small low enrollment schools will be part of Kansas for until we go to a statewide school for everything, which I think is a bad idea too. So they will always be part of the fabric of Kansas education. How do we help them do that when it's when it's necessary or when it's best for the community? And how do we support communities that are are looking at or need to make another decision?
Dennis?
Well, Frank, thank you for being honest with us. All right, is there an arbitrary number as far what it costs per student where, I mean, that a school district just can't operate?
I think it can be, it's a little bit different in every situation. And it has to do, well, I'll I'll give an example. So there are districts that in 1963 consolidated, but they didn't really consolidate. So they still had two K-12 buildings going on. And so you you saw that with what happened with with Burne and Wetmore and some of those areas. So they consolidated to the district, but they didn't actually do consolidation to gain efficiencies. So they all promised, this is what happens with consolidations, there's a promise that this building will be kept open. And that was the argument that Burne made is that so that's a promise they would keep it open, but they couldn't afford to enclose it. So some of it depends on how widespread they are, how efficient are they being with just the way they're using buildings and staff? I mean, that, you know, you're getting into combination classrooms and what are you offering for specials and those kinds of things all get down to it. I mean, if you have one student and let's say it's a weighted student, so you you get, we'll say, $8,000 for the student. Well, you can only hire a part-time staff member and they have to do everything. So at some point, it does get too small. I think Randy talked about, under 100, it's it starts to get pretty tricky. So I think that's I think that's would would be something. But as far as it's, you know, 79.2, we don't, we haven't done anything like that.
I I'm just wondering, you know, since we're kind of thinking about the future and trying to come up maybe kind of a think tank situation here is other options like four-day week, anything else come to your mind that would help small schools and?
So I I don't know that four-day week, I I don't think that's an answer to anything. I think that in some cases, especially at the high school, when you get small virtual options or a way that you can or distance learning is one of the ways that they've turned to, they've been doing that for years. Four-day week just rearranges, it's kind of like it it'd be, you know, just moving the chairs around a little bit. Can you save a little bit of money on transportation? Probably, but that's not your major cost. Your major cost is staffing. And then the other part that we haven't even really talked about other than the cost is finding somebody to take the position. Because and that's the other things that rural districts face is how do, I mean, even if we can afford to hire the teacher, how do we get them to come? And then the more spread out those resources are, then we also have a staffing issue with it as well.
Michelle?
So just asking this question, since we we don't know how many of those students or families have chosen to homeschool or set up an unaccredited private school, which is essentially a homeschool. We have some and we have one in Johnson County area that the parent has decided to do an unaccredited school for their child and it was less money to do that than send them to even a public school. So so it it, I mean, the cost savings there. So that's that's that family's decision. They're making sacrifices, they're driving a lot further than their home where they live. So I'm just wondering, we don't, I haven't looked at the census, I haven't looked at the population there, but we don't really know because they're not really associated with any public or accredited private school. So we don't know those numbers, that that could be going on in that area as well.
Which is why we didn't include the accredited private numbers before because we we have no idea about non-accredited private schools, which again includes homeschools. We we have, we have no way of knowing what those those enrollments are.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any more questions, board members? Thank you. We will take a 10-minute break. Back at 10:12. Legislative priorities.
Well, I'm glad I got to come back after the last conversation, so, let's see. I am, actually, yeah. Let's see if I can find, there we go. All right, so now we're going to talk about legislative priorities for 2025. And just as a reminder, this is receive items, so we'll just be talking about them today. The way the state board has done this in the past, my understanding is, my first time through this, is that we discuss them in November and then you act on them in December ahead of the legislative session starting in January. So we included last year's legislative priorities in the, in the board packet. And so what we're going to do is we're going to kind of start with the legislative priorities that you've had in the past. And we're going to talk about whether they stay on or not. Gabrielle and I have a couple of questions about a few of them that have been on there for a while and whether they stay. And then we're going to talk about the ones that you may consider adding on and then whatever else you may want to do with that. So we kept them divided into the same areas that they were before, which was academic efforts. And so the two bold ones are ones that we have some questions about how the board would like to proceed. So the first one, I think is something that Dr. Watson may have information about how that may be something different going forward, so we may come back to that one in December. The next one about the concept of public-private partnerships with business and industries to allow internships. This was on legislative priorities and there's been some action by the legislature, most of it around liability insurance and how liability insurance is seen when a student is onsite in an internship and that it's the school's liability that's there instead of the businesses in most cases unless the business is negligent. So the question is, is there something else specific that we need to be talking about or worried about? Or is this remaining from a topic that was talked about in the past?
You're talking about the internships?
Yes.
The internships? Well, I think the thing would be, we would probably want to continue to support the half million or whatever it is they have to fund the intermediaries at the workforce centers who are supposed to be helping districts find internship opportunities. And we wouldn't want that to go away.
Michelle.
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. I would, I would look into this as far as like the, I'm just looking at the CAPS program and looking at how limited it is as far as like if you're in the business, the global business thing, the limited opportunities there rather than having, having the student be able to, they, they maybe provide a lot of resource and then go out and even get that extended into summer where you have a part-time job. So you can get credit hours, but as far as credit hours, maybe if you, through, through offering it rather than that, have a part-time job or have a, have that time out of school where you can go and resource out. Then if you're a paid employee, you're going to have to follow the rules and the, everything that goes with that. They're limiting, we're limiting there the resources of where they can go. So, so with my son having that opportunity, only like seven kids took advantage of that or less because it, they didn't like the location or they didn't like the opportunity that was being given to them. It was a great, it was, it was an experience and then he went on and did a part-time job in the summer, but it was, you know, driving there and it was a long way. So they're, they're limiting as far as the resources within that community that would be closest to that child, closest to that child's high school rather than driving all the way, because it's limited into what opportunities are being given to them. If they had a part-time job like he did in the summer, he doesn't mind driving there because it's a, it's a, it's a, you're getting paid for that, right? And he's using his gas to drive there and it's, it's on his own, it's accountability and, and it meant more to him because he was paying for it. So he, he got out of it what he wanted to get out of it because he had to pay, pay for that on his own.
But that didn't really have anything to do with the legislature, that's a local implementation thing. I mean, the legislative priority is what's the legislature going to do to promote and support internships? And that's a whole different thing than what you're talking about.
But if you're doing it in high school and 12 hours in high school, you're, you're, it's the, it's the, it's the, it's the limitations and what, in the meaningful, in the meaningful of it.
Are you saying you don't support internships in high school?
The 12 hour.
Oh, you're talking about the 12 hours?
Yeah, I'm talking about the 12 hours.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the internships.
I'm talking about the 12 hours. Because if you're paying for that, giving the opportunity to go and outsource that if you want those extra hours and you want to pay for that, whether it's through Baker University or the Johnson County Community College, whatever it is, if you're paying for that out of your own pocket, it's more meaningful and it's, there's more, you're getting more out of it and I feel like you have more of a voice as to, if somebody else is paying for it.
Unless you're from a family that can't afford a $20 test, okay? I mean, I'm sure your kids are grateful you can afford that, but we're talking about all the kids around the state who can't. But anyway, I guess you're going to learn more about that today, about the 12-hour, what options we're talking about.
Board leadership is meeting with K-Bor today, so we'll be talking more about this one as well. Okay, reminder to board members, please use the hand raise app. Dr. Harwood, how many slides do you have and how might?
Six.
Six, okay. And we have an hour, going to double check here, we have an hour allocated for this conversation. All right, thank you.
So actually based on the other conversation, we can, the second one about the public-private partnerships, I think we can reword that in the idea that expanding those, those opportunities for students as opposed, this was a, there is allowance for them to happen now. So when we read this one, it's talked about how do we make that happen? And so if they can happen, but we can certainly leave it in there as, but we'll just reword it as a way to continue and expand opportunities for, for student, for students to get real-world internship, we'll come up with a way to reword that.
Kathy.
So I honestly don't understand where the legislature falls within that. Like, why do we need legislative action for businesses to be able to provide internships?
So we did need legislative action to, so we had businesses that were reluctant to allow internships and job shadows because of liability issues.
Okay.
So the legislature did take action to make that clearer and how those could be set up so that the districts and the, the partners could say, okay, this is exactly how this is going to work.
Okay, but that's been done.
That's been done.
Okay.
So what Ann talked about is that there is some funding which actually helps, helps fund intermediaries, which are these organizations that help connect districts and students to those situations and actually help the businesses better understand what they can get from the process as well. And so that would be a way of making sure that these are, that we're still able to do them. So we don't go backwards, basically.
Interesting, okay.
I've got Ann and then Jim.
Yeah, it was a funding thing. I mean, there are a lot of small schools. We have a school like Seaman, okay? They have a dedicated person who manages their internships, goes out and works with the businesses, connects kids who are interested in that field. And it's amazing what they do. But there are a lot of districts who don't have people to do that and they don't have time to go out and talk to businesses, they don't have anybody on staff who can do that. So the legislature put like a half million, I think it was, into funding intermediaries that would be housed in the five workforce centers around the state. So in your area, there is a workforce center that has an intermediary who's being paid to connect businesses with students. And that is an extra resource for the schools to use when they don't have the time or the personnel to go out and do this. And I'd say like everything else, it's done better in some centers than in others, but it's a really important thing. And like down in Wichita, they do an amazing job down there. So anyway, it's a really neat opportunity and a good resource for schools.
Jim.
Thank you, Ann. That's pretty much what I was going to say, but really it's the leadership within the school district could come from the board, could come from a principal or a teacher, but somebody's got to say, we got to do this. And it would be appropriate for us to provide incentives or encouragement, you know, for districts to do it like we're doing right now. But we say it here and we do here and we send some out and we celebrate some successes. You know, I think we're missing a real opportunity for students to be, to be successful, to see the relevance of school, you know, to have a future, you know, in a vision of a future, you know, through process, through programs like this. But it takes a lot of work. You know, sometimes, very rarely, you'll have a business come into your school and say, hey, we want to do this. They went to a, usually went to a meeting of some kind or, you know, chamber thing and somebody said something. But typically it's, it falls on the school, the school district, pretty much the school and pretty much the leadership of the school to do it. Because you have to do a lot of things different in terms of making this happen, you know? And a lot of people look at you, what are you doing this for? You know, it's not just you have to send somebody out and they're going to hang out with, at the car salesman and they're going to learn how to do that or go to a garage or go to, you know, a law firm. You kind, there has to be a program, a structure that they're going to. They just don't show up and say, well, why don't you wait over there, I'll see you a little bit? You know, you've got to work with your businesses to establish, you know, the goals and get them orientated to the needs of students and, you know, the realities of, I got to leave, I got to pep rally. You know, there's, there's a lot of give and take in this. And I guess my biggest point is, this is not easy. It, it's a commitment that school districts have to make and sometimes you'll find chambers and businesses that are, you know, aligned or they, they want to do it, but very rarely. You know, so it, and you know, you've got a lot of stuff to do already at your school. So when you ask that, we're going to ask them to do this, it's a one more thing. It's a really good thing, but it's a one more thing for limited staffs already. You know, I just want to keep the reality of doing this, you know, in, in front of us and how we can knock down some of those barriers, give access to things that maybe they don't know they can do. I don't remember or not aware of any college classes that teach you how to do this, you know? It's, it's really much learning on the job, you know? And we've got a lot of people out there. And I took one, Boke Ed, Boke Ed has done probably the best job with this of all the groups. I might be speaking off a little too much, but they've been doing this for a while. But almost always we run into legal issues, financial issues and transportation issues. You know, I had one going and, at one, at a school and all of a sudden I give it to a, a community group and a lawyer comes up to me and asks, what about the liability? Never occurred to me. You know, well, the kid's taking his own car, you covering the insurance for that car if it gets in a wreck? You know, because now he's, that car is now being used by the school district to provide an educational opportunity, you know? And I'm like, well, uh, well, uh, well, uh. So there is, there, the incentive for doing it, what I'm getting, driving at, at the school level, whether you're a 6A or 1A, and I've done it in both, you know, is, is, is really a challenge. You have to be committed to do it. And I would hope that we could look at ways that we could expedite it, assist it and promote it, you know? And that's what needs to happen. Thank you.
Betty.
Thank you, a quick question on the second one. And And we did have the education committee meeting with, in Wichita. They, the, the big concern for businesses had to do with insurance, workers, workers' comp. Having students out there who was actually going to cover that insurance premium since it was based, I, I think that's based on the compensation or whatever they pay off for individuals in their buildings. We met, it was never resolved and that was with Renee Erickson, Susan Estes, a few of them in Wichita. And I'm wondering, do we have any more feedback on there? Because the businesses were pushing back because of that additional cost. Should the schools take care of that part of it? And I don't know if that was ever really resolved.
So the, the liability insurance for a job shadow or internship was resolved in that that person is still a student when they're on the premises. So unless the business is negligent, the liability for them being there would be the schools. That changes if they're actually an employee. So if they're, if they have a paid position, the school doesn't have to pay workers' comp insurance because they weren't paying them to begin with, so. But there, there now is more definition of who's responsible when, which helps the businesses understand, well, this is what I, this is what I'm taking on versus before it would seem to be much more nebulous.
Okay, so you're saying for right now, the schools would be taking care of that portion of the?
For unpaid opportunities.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That was not, that was not made clear and I wondered if that was ever resolved.
So that, that, that part did get resolved a couple of years ago. And so with this, what I, what we'll look at as rewording it is just, we, we do want to set up situations to encourage and grow the opportunities for students to be in work, in workplace settings.
So that's, and that's something that's been made clear to the businesses? Because I understand that was their real, that was a big pushback in that area.
So I, I would say that depends on the business and how the school has then. I would say there are still businesses out there that will say, no, we don't want to take on the liability and just say no, and it could be that they don't understand or it could be they're just not interested in taking on high school students.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Let's move on.
All right, so the next one is about the legislation that requires the state board of education. So there is legis, we, right now, one of our required reports is a foster care report card that the law says we work with DCF to produce a report card about how foster care students are doing. So I, I think this law is already in place. So unless there's something else, I think we can drop this one off because mission accomplished. Okay?
So I'll just say.
Okay.
Does it become a pointing fingers again?
I. I can't make promises about finger pointing in the future. And so right, actually, we've already met with DCF, had some communication on making changes to the report card, which we think will help it in some ways. So that's going on and will continue to go on and is in current statute. The next one was already on the reduced waiting time for retirement, reducing, reducing the eliminate the financial penalty. So you had Alan Conroy, you were talking about that. The other one that came up was Capers 3 and Capers 2. This was in the legislature last year, it came up during your conversation. Is that something that you want to add to the, your legislative priorities is having these teachers or the candidate, and I changed it to school employees because last year was teachers. We can leave it as teachers, that's, can be either way of moving them from Capers 3 to Capers 2.
Frank, can you just remind the board of what the difference is between?
So the big difference is Capers 1 and 2 are defined benefit retirement plans and Capers 3 is a defined contribution retirement plan. So the difference is, is that based on a formula, if you retire under Capers 2 or 3, there is a specific amount of money that you will get every month for as long as you live. In Capers 3, it would look, work a little bit more like a 401K situation where the, there is an amount that the employee pays in and the state pays in and it has a guaranteed return of 6%, I think is what it is. And then it's whatever that amount is when you retire would be what your retirement income would be. I got the, in a nutshell. And so one of the reasons that superintendents would talk about this is that if you live on a border, in a border community, Missouri, Oklahoma, they both, both those states still have defined benefit retirement plans. And so especially for experienced teachers that are actually thinking about retirement, that can be a reason why we gain or lose folks. First-year teachers, it's harder to get them to think about retirement, but they figure it out at some point and then they decide if it's, they need to stay in Kansas once they're kind of, kind of in the prime of their career too, so.
Ann?
And I did wave my handy thingy. So, but do we have any feedback from KNEA or any teachers' organizations that they want this? Before we weigh in on it? Because, I mean, there's an advantage either way. Because if you have a 401K, it's easier to move. If you only stay someplace for a few years, as where a defined benefit plan, you know, kind of goes like this. You have to be there forever to get the most out of it. So I think before we do something on teachers' behalf, we ought to ask them if they want it.
There are two main teacher organizations in the state. One doesn't take a position.
Okay.
On legislative idea, areas. KNEA does. And last year they, they, they were supportive of this.
Okay, well, I think it's important to know.
There's a real difference if you're a teacher in Capers 3 in terms of what your retirement's going to be than if you're in Capers 2.
True.
Capers 2 says at 30 years and age 60, you have full retirement. Capers 1 is a factor of years' experience and things. But Capers 3 is a much less robust retirement system. And so they were a year ago, Ann. I don't, haven't talked to them this year.
Well, it would make sense, but I just wanted to make sure in case they had thought of something we hadn't. Thank you. But I think if that's the case, we.
Question for you, is this the only place that we are going to look at Capers? Is it on any other lines? Okay, so I would, I mean, I would seek to expand this because we also had a conversation about the cost of living increase, that, so we need to take care of our retired teachers. I'm hearing a lot about that. When I go back home and, and talk to teachers, they're very frustrated that they haven't had any increase. And if they are on Capers 3, that's especially difficult. Also, I, I would urge us to consider the possibility of asking for returning to a tier 2 Capers for anyone who was hired after 2015 or in 2015 and beyond.
So not just school employees, but all of?
And, and my next question was, does it matter if we say school employees or teachers?
So the, the bill that was in place last year was only for teachers. So it did not include custodians, paras, administrators, secretaries. It was only teachers and it was tightly defined. So that, that was the legislation that didn't move forward last year.
Ann, have you stuck your hand again?
Yeah, I mean, I think we ought to include employees because it's bus drivers and we know we have a tough time getting bus drivers and all kinds of things. But also, I mean, we can ask for a cost of living increase, but defined benefit plan by its very nature has no increase after retirement. It is a defined benefit. So you know what you're going to get when you retire and that's all you get. I mean, Capers isn't the only one. I retired from Southwestern Bell and most companies have a defined benefit plan. You don't get a COLA after you retire because a defined benefit plan is what it is. When I left Southwestern Bell, that was it, you know? And so, I mean, we can ask for it, you can ask for anything, it's nice. But the cost of doing that is huge. So if we have a concern about how much we'd be adding to the budget to make that happen, and I know Alan had some numbers, but I think before we add that as an item, we ought to know what the cost is because it's huge.
You get a certain amount and the legislature has in the past given a cost of living to those who retired many, many, many years ago. And there's very few of them still living as a matter of fact. So it's, the cost is rather minimal. So it's, it's a kind of a, a decision, what do you want to do? And I don't know, Capers 3, does it include a cost of living in it? I'm not familiar with it, so. There must be something.
Modified 401K.
To have gotten people to think it was a good deal other than just the.
Okay, we're going to run out of time.
The reduction in cost.
Let's move along.
All right.
Any other comments on Capers, quickly?
Frank, is there any surveys you've done with teachers and, and school employees? Okay.
I, I, just to go along with what Randy said, the, the legislation last year was supported by USA Kansas, KNEA and KASB. So in, in some regards, it's, you know, having as legislative priority as whether or not we add our voice to those kinds of conversations when they come up. So we'll, we'll bring back some ideas and some other answers on the Capers for your approval and our consideration in December. The last one in academic supports is whether or not we want to ask for additional funding for state assessment programs. The, the reason behind this is that the, what you're able to do for state assessments is very limited because Kansas spends very little on state assessments. When we, you look at some of the comparison states, Florida is the example we use most often, whereas Kansas spends about three or four dollars per student of state general fund on state assessments. Florida spends about $28. And so when we get these questions that we got with the virtual program about what happens if questions are, if the test gets invalidated because it, of test security, other states have multiple versions of tests because they've paid for those. Most of what we spend on state assessments is federal funding and very little state general fund. So it would give you more flexibility in having more versions of the test so that if we were compromised in the future, you would have something else to fall back on that only one version might have been compromised.
Can you remind the board quickly? We just voted on this a couple of months ago and that money came from KSD's budget, correct?
So, so, so the, the current contract is in line with the federal and state funding that is currently already part of KSD's budget. This would be asking for additional funding, state general fund, to enhance the program.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Jim?
With what? It's actually on a, it's on a later slide. Yeah, yeah.
We've still got five slides to go.
Okay. All right. So seeing no questions there, move on to health and safety, which starts off with the bus alarm. So that was, that's been on there. Our recommendation is it stays on there because you've had those conversations and we'll see if it goes anywhere this year after the work that you did. So we didn't really have any questions about that one.
I couldn't have done that if it was an arm out. You know, and it was, it, it could have been disastrous.
Yes. So we, we made the assumption that you would want to continue this to be, after your conversations last year, you'd want this to be, continue to be a priority. And so the next one is efforts to reduce human trafficking in Kansas. We think that is a great thing to do. Is there something specific that we would be doing with the legislature in education in that direction? So that's just one of those things that when I look at the legislative priorities, I'm thinking about, how are we supposed to either give our opinions for or against something impacting education? Clearly, we don't want students to be human trafficked and we want them to be safe and secure. So one of the things we talked about is that we could start each section with kind of a, kind of a header of, we think it's really important that students are safe and secure while they're in schools, which kind of encompasses that. So the question is, is there something specific we should be doing about human trafficking? Again, not saying that you, we, we want to reduce it and we'll do everything we can, just not sure if there was actually something going on legislatively now.
I don't think they had any specific legislation last year. We just wanted to be on board in case something came up that we would be supportive of it. But we didn't have anything planned. We were just kind of like, this is on our radar too because we know it impacts teens everywhere.
I believe it was.
It was a couple of years ago, yeah.
Connected to the attorney general's effort.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So we'd attached it to someone else who had promoted something and I don't know that anyone is promoting it now.
So I guess my question would be, is it with?
The, any kind of attack at human trafficking. It's certainly still alive and well.
Well.
And I think of nothing else. Maybe we need to, as a board, approach human trafficking from an education point of view for kids to make sure that they don't get involved in that kind of thing, much like you would with drugs and so on. But, and if someone does come up with something, maybe it would be a good idea to then be able to latch on to their efforts.
Were you going to say something?
Well, I was going to say, when you look at the two that are bold there, would it, I mean, would you be, would you be okay with it? We kind of craft a statement around health and safety that says, you know, the state board is, is in favor of keeping kids safe and including human trafficking and child abuse and neglect. It's just that both of those things are clearly things that the state board wants students to be safe and secure. But if, and a general statement would put us in a position where, well, yes, the state board has a position that students being safe at home and at school is important so that we could, I mean, however that makes sense for the state board or the department to weigh in on that without calling out specific initiatives, I guess.
So the, the attorney general did ask this board, it would be, the former attorney general, now congressman, asked if that was a, that was a priority. The second one came about because of legislation telling you what to do about bullying, what to do about a suicide. And that, that advisory was put together to say, stop passing legislation and let us handle that internally and, and look at all those programs versus having all these laws passed. So it was a little bit different. So if you keep the second one, it may be, we have a process that includes legislators on it. Don't pass laws that are isolated that may be in contradictory to other things that we're doing.
Danny? And then Dennis and then Ann.
Thank you, it'd be, two seconds. The human trafficking thing, I think that's something that maybe actually the legislature and us can be on the same page about, which would be special.
Dennis?
And the cyberbullying, we, you know, we, we do have some board members that cyberbully me.
I just want to say when, when I took my CDL exam, re, you know, got it renewed, there's a 20-minute video that the DM, that, that. there's a 20-minute video that the DM, that, that driver's license they require, you didn't look at. And it's, it's just a good educational thing, maybe it could be added to a PD day. You know, I mean, it's just an educational thing that's helpful to understand the severity of it.
I, I will say that a lot of districts have had the KBI or the FBI do human trafficking presentations for staff over time. I know that our district had done a few different things. So I, I think some of that is going on in schools, it's not currently required.
There were a couple of those at the KSTE Great Ideas Conference as well. Ann?
Yeah, I think to follow up what Randy said, the, the third one is important because we were trying to identify things that we need to handle ourselves, stay out of our business. Number two is a broader topic that could impact a lot of different things. And I think we ought to keep it because if something comes up, we don't want to have to come, or we, whoever you guys send over there to play that game, doesn't have to come back and get you to vote on it. They can say, we already have board approval, we support eliminating human trafficking, then they can go write testimony and, and run with it. So I think we ought to keep them both for different reasons.
Kathy?
But I agree with Frank that we need to rewrite them because to me, that's not what that says. When we're saying legislative priorities, I, I don't hear what Randy said and what you said in that statement.
So.
Am I crazy?
So we, we can look at rewriting it in some way, basically, but I, I think that the, the point is, is that if legislation gets introduced without coming back to the full board, if this is on the legislative priorities, then whoever the legislative liaisons or the department could write something in support of, yes, we are supporting with this. Part of that would be, is it aimed at schools or is it not aimed at schools or how, you know, whether, some of it is, this is really broadly written and may have little impact on schools or schooling. Again, human trafficking is bad no matter where it's at, but just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out how our legislative priorities turn into conversations with legislators, I guess. So I can work with that. But we may try to reword that more, that first part, more into an introductory statement, which would give us more leeway on pretty much anything that, you know, would, would say, I mean, you could put something in about the opioid crisis too, that isn't specifically in there, that we would certainly be in favor of students not having access to opioids and so, those kinds of things. So we'll look at seeing if we can make both of those work. The third one we'll leave on there because that did have a specific purpose. The ones we talked about adding on is, you heard a couple, while ago about the farm-to-plate. We were approached by actually asking for FTE to do some of these things. We decided not to have, ask for that in our budget. The idea being is that if, if the legislature wants to put money into farm-to-plate activities, I would take FTE and we would let them know that, not, not in the position to ask for it kind of preemptively. Having this in here would, would allow us to say, yes, we are supportive and will help you in that endeavor, as opposed to the other way which we were asked to do it, which was to preemptively ask for the staff to, to implement it before the legislature had even decided to appropriate any funds.
I think we're good.
Okay. And then the last one, is this actually what we talked about with safe and secure schools? So in the budget, we did add, we did add the $10 million, which was, would fully fund all of the requests, last year's was 12 millions. But really what we'd like to do is say, why don't we find out what this was going to cost and what we need to do and move forward with that if that's what the legislature wants to do. So this is actually an extension of what you've already approved with the budget. Okay?
I, I would encourage you on the last one, seriously look, do, do a little bit, have Frank's team do a little bit of a cost study, because I will just tell you, when there's a tragedy in Kansas, the fingers are going to go pointing everywhere. And right now, we're not even funding the request that come forward on, hey, we'd like to do this in our schools, but there's not enough money. And I, I think to say, it's never going to be a, we're not talking about a fortress, but what would be reasonable as a base level of security provided for schools? And then, then you can make your decision whether you support it or not.
So next is funding. First one is, I think there was a consistent one and I think is going to come up again this year, only using public education funds for public schools. So that would, we didn't have anything on that. The second one was following state statute, moving towards 92%. Your budget request actually does that anyway. Continued coordination and investment in career technical education programs that are aligned with workforce needs. This actually goes back to the other one we talked about on the, on the academic part. So we may look at combining those two in some ways, basically saying we are looking at ways to enhance career technical education and workplace learning to, based on workforce needs. So we could look at combining those two.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Frank, wouldn't that, again, don't you, aren't you learning at a part-time job, no matter what it is? Because you don't know as a kid what, what you want to do. And by working at a veterinarian, you may find out, I could never put a dog down, or I could never handle blood and surgery or whatever. You see those things, you're just sometimes even walking the dog at the local veterinarian, you're going to see things happen and you're going to be like, I thought I was going to go into veterinarian school. Not, not, not just the science alone, but the humanity, hu, 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 oh gosh, I can't even talk. The human part of it as far as like putting a dog down or putting a cat down or all the, all the dogs that come in that are, have problems and things like that. Just getting a part-time job or two part-time jobs, whether they're totally different, ones in customer service and ones in restaurant business, whatever, it's having, allowing the students out of the school, they show, they bring back to the school, I'm working in the afternoon as a part-time job. And then if you, you could say, well, we give credit hours for that, but I'm just saying that's an opportunity. And then there's the liabilities there on the business, they have to follow the rules, they have to show up for work, they have to, all the things, accountability that you learn from a part-time job. And it's more meaningful, again, it's back on the individual, it's more meaningful and they're getting it, they're getting paid for it.
So, and I, I, so I think that is part of it. I think the, what this would be more is for job shadowing, which, so a, a part-time job is something that's going to take quite a bit of time and, and investment. The other option is, is to give them the opportunities to just go and see and talk to those people. Now that may lead to, the next step was, hey, I think that's really interesting, maybe I, maybe I, you have a part-time job that I can work on and, and learn more about it. I think the issue is that students don't have enough time to have enough part-time jobs to look at all of the different places they would go. And so, whereas actually working in the industry would be the best education and understanding if you want to do that, this would be, well, there are five things I want to look at as a, then I'll decide which one to move into. So that's how I would see those as being different.
Well, business owners coming in, I mean, that's, that, providing those resources and having business owners coming in, in front of those students, and then having that, allowing that time to ask questions, you know, maybe, maybe one less pep is, you know, more businesses coming in and, and, and having those, showing the plethora of opportunities and then still have the accountability of a part-time job. Most people aren't going to just let you start on the first day anyway without a job shadowing or some, a manager or somebody next to you. They're not going, it's going to cut you loose and say, do whatever you want, you're hired. I mean, there's going to be somebody there that's job shadowing you. Now, if you want to talk about education, I mean, you're going to learn math skills, you're counting a drawer, you're better, you better be able to count change. I mean, those are the kind of things that you learn in school with academics is math. Just, well, there's a lot of things. I can, I'm just thinking about jobs that I've done and, and mentored people over the last eight and a half years. These are young students coming in and I can tell you where they're lacking and it comes to academics, doesn't come to their skills. The academics is the most important thing that I'm learning that they're lacking, working eight and a half years with, with kids that are coming in as a part-time job.
Okay. Moving on real quick, Betty?
I just want to wait until we get to transportation.
Okay, Ann?
I think the funding thing has nothing to do with part-time jobs. I think what we're hitting at here is that we want them to retain the DOT 5 funding for CTE because they have kicked around getting rid of that. It's millions and millions of dollars that go to the high schools that support their welding programs, everything that falls under CTE. That's what this bullet is about and we want to make sure they keep that in the, in the formula and don't try to drop it like they did a few years ago.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So then opportunities for expanding early childhood is, that's always been part of what you've talked about. So we would be ready for Betty's question about, about transportation if she was up.
Yep, go ahead, Betty.
Thank you. And it's just clarification on in all unsafe situations. From my perspective, we don't even think about all that should be included unless somebody brings it up and go, oh yeah, that's a great idea. So are we going to, I mean, is there any way we can add clarity or, so that they understand? No sidewalks, crossing four lanes of traffic or those kinds of things?
So the reason we put this on in bold is that as part of the budget recommendations, we took off the request for funding for funding less than two and a half miles because we thought that with the task force coming up, probably not going to, probably not going to be a lot of movement made on funding issues. And so the question was whether or not the state, since we took that off of the budget recommendation, does it stay on as a legislative priority? So from what you've said is that, I mean, it can, is that, and that it, it makes sense that if it comes up, we want to talk about that there's all these other things going in there, we just didn't make the, the request overtly this time.
Okay. No more questions, moving on.
The next one is the dyslexia coordinator position is in our budget. And so it's in our base budget from year to year. So again, you, you've requested that as part of the budget. Part of the issue is that if we keep asking for it to stay in the budget, does that highlight the fact that it's already in the budget? And, or are we looking at?
Yeah, let's take it out.
I mean, it, it, there, there is funding for that position in the budget and it continues over in the base budget.
Yeah. Ann?
Unless it changes. I mean, the legislature's trying to change the way they do the, the budget now. So is this shift of taking it away from the governor and moving it to legislators going to, I mean, or do we even know?
You have already approved your base budget request.
Yeah.
So the department and any liaison would have authority to say, no, you shouldn't do that because the state board was in favor of that budget that included that position.
I, I agree with the voices behind me that we leave it off.
Okay, all right. Then the other two, the apprentice program just kind of just got started, so certainly thought we would keep that in there. Bonded interest was one that has come up quite a bit. One that, two that have been talked about a little bit are support for universal free meals. There were, there was at least one piece of legislation introduced last year that, what this would do is that there are states that after the pandemic, when the, the federal government said free lunch for everyone, have continued that on. That conversation has come up. We, I mean, if it gets introduced again, we will probably get questions about it. We will certainly get questions about the cost of it and just whether or not the state board wants to take a position on it. And then the last one is, again, we've been asked several times about what we're doing for cybersecurity in districts and we are currently not funded to take that role on. If that's something that the state board wants, or the legislature wants the Department of Education to take on, that it would be a significant cost. And so this would just say that if you want us to do it, we'll have to be funded to do Questions about those? Okay. All right, so education policy and governance. This goes back a little bit to the, just the constitutional authority of the state board, Kansas State High School Activity Association, which you heard from Mr. Faflick yesterday, the authority of local boards. The next one is amending the Student Data Privacy Act to allow for data sharing, participation in research and evaluation of student outcomes. We're going to, we need to add to this one a little bit so that we can, did we write it up here? No. I'll take it, went back off. So that Dr. Watson talked yesterday about information from the military to use for post-secondary success. We may need some adjustment to the Kansas Student Data Privacy Act in order for us to be able to participate in that. So we would be asking, we may be asking for some of that. We won't know that for sure until we see what some of that is.
And that data does not include students' names and personal information?
It may have to, it's just that we would be able to, with a data sharing agreement, say it wouldn't be used for any other purpose. The question comes out is that when you're trying to match the data up, who's doing the matching? It's unlikely we're going to get a database of all of the people that are enlisted in the military that we can match to our students. So somewhere, if we're going to do that, it's going to have to be matched in some place. And so we would have to, we would have to be able to match that somehow with whatever data sharing agreements would be in place to do that.
And those agreements would be with other state agencies or even within?
Well, this, this one would have to be with, with the federal government.
Okay. And if we don't do this, what happens?
Then we would not be able to say, we would not be able to count people enlisted in the military as successful under our current model.
Betty?
Just real quick, so those students that take, what is that, ASVAT? ASVAT? Does that any way contribute to giving us information when they take it in school?
No, because we wouldn't know if they actually go on and enlist and then stay in. So this, this would be like some of the same information we're looking at with the labor data and some of those kinds of things, which would give us a better picture of what our students are doing after they leave high school and, and what we currently call the five-year success average or student outcomes. And currently, we aren't able to, we do that with college information because we can get that information from the National Clearinghouse. We get the data and match it. So that's going to be different.
I don't see any more questions.
All right. So.
Danny?
Why is it important what they do after, and our, and our job is to make them academically ready to go out into the world? And so why is it important for us to get all this data for post-secondary stuff? Not necessarily military, whatever, mechanics, what, in college, I mean, I'm trying to, in my mind, I can't, I just can't.
We need to know whether or not it worked.
So. Yeah, so.
Please don't take me wrong, I, I just.
I mean, so I, I'm addressing it because it is currently a board goal that we measure that and so we need to collect the data in order to measure this, which, which is a current board goal of post-secondary success. The, kind of the rationale that I would have, I wasn't here when the board came up with it, but part of it is, is we think we know what's going on and some of our students are, so they graduate, you know, they get a perfect ACT, they, you know, get perfect state assessment scores. Does that actually prepare them for what's going, what they're doing next? And so looking at some of that information, other than just anecdotal of, did you know what this student did or did you know what this student did, actually helps us make decisions about programs we have and whether they actually lead to successful employed citizens later on. So that's, I mean, again, I wasn't here when the state board set that goal, but from my perspective, it's trying to do the best we can to measure the goal that the state board set.
Thank you. Don't see any more questions.
Okay. So then the other one, I think we've had a discussion about, the, the changing statute, you've already requested the funding required to adjust the state board salary to be in line with the daily rate of the in-session time for legislators. So this would just say that we're, you're in favor of changes to, to the legislation to, to do that. And then, that was my last slide, so I only had. And then that was my last slide, so I only had five.
I was accounting for six. Now we're ahead of schedule. Not quite, we're right on time. Board members, any?
One of the things I said to, to the chair, it may be helpful in the Friday note for me to include what you've already approved as your funding request from the legislature. So as you're thinking about this, you're in concert with that or not in opposition to that? Because that's already been done. Oftentimes, these are other positions that you may want to weigh in on.
And I was gonna add the kind of clarifying comment too. You said it, but I'm gonna say it again. The importance of this discussion is that we are arming whoever goes across the street to have that conversation with the knowledge that yes, they have the full unanimous support of the board. Or, you know, when we vote next month, it may be that something passes with the majority, but it's not unanimous. And then they are able to say that when they're across the street. So Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, that's what I would like as far as like the breakdown, because we don't know what the new people coming in. And if one of them happens to be a legislative liaison, we just want to make sure that it hasn't changed from, from a month or two ago, which it may, it may have. So you're, you might say a majority supported this, and now a new majority supports, doesn't support it.
Well, so every year, we have this conversation. And every two years, we have the conversation. But what about the outgoing board? Because we're the ones voting on this, and three people at this table will vote next month and then won't be part of the board in January.
So you just, consistency as far as communication is, just one more time, we're going over, and this is coming up, and this is, there's a hearing on it. Because I mean, I'm watching all those hearings, and I may have some input on some things after reading all the bills. We, you know, they get changed all the time. So what we think might be looking good, and we voted on that, it changed midstream. And now we are like, wow, now they're adding this, and this, and this.
Yeah, the bills change, our priorities stay the same once we voted on them, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
And that's actually why it's keeping things kind of more philosophical in general is what we need to do. Because at some point, yes, whoever the liaisons were, will have to wrestle the technicalities. If a bill has, I mean, because it's happened before, you get things that, well, yeah, the state board's supported this one, but not this one. And then that gets tricky on how you represent that. Because if, if the board approves it, then that person can say, on behalf of the State Board of Education, we support or, or don't support this. Without that, it's one person's opinion.
Okay. I think we're good, thank you very much. We will take, we will take a 10-minute break, back at 11:20.
All right, we are ready for item number five, a presentation from Wichita USD 259. Am I, I was gonna say, is there someone here to introduce you? But maybe I'm introducing you. So welcome Superintendent, I'm gonna botch your last name, is it Bealfield? Okay. Welcome to the state board.
Of 23, closer. Am I good? Okay. So excited to be here. Betty had asked me if I would be willing to come and talk to you all about Wichita Public Schools. I'm sure that all 280-some districts in Kansas are completely unique. Wichita is, is one of those districts that's completely unique. And so I want to share a little bit about what makes us unique. So I have a short-ish presentation, and then definitely want to stay for questions. Most of what I, what I'm gonna share today is not on the slides, it's on some handouts here. So I'll, I'll pass those out as we, as we get going, so. So to start with, I'm gonna share our district at a glance document. We are, as you probably know, the largest district in the state of Kansas. We are one of the larger districts in the nation, would be in the top 100 as far as student enrollment. As, as you know, districts get cut up and carved in different ways. So we're actually, you know, about this, twice the size of St. Louis Public Schools, even though the metropolitan's way bigger than Wichita. The Wichita city limits essentially is our district, with the exception of a little bit of Mays. Mays School District has a little bit of the city of Wichita. 46,000 students, that is our September 20th headcount. So that's parents, teachers, all the way up to adult diploma completion. But some other interesting facts that you'll see on the district at a glance, on the front side of that. We're the third-largest employer in Sedgwick County during the school year. Counting part-time employees, we employ about 8,500 employees. We have 115 languages spoken in Wichita Public Schools, which is an opportunity and a challenge. We have, especially over the past year, seen a pretty significant refugee population that get, has been relocated to Wichita. So around the neighborhood of about 900 refugee students came into the district last year, most of whom came after September 20th of last year, for what that's worth. So a lot of rich diversity within our school district, a lot of opportunities. That's one of the things when you have, you know, large high schools and a large urban setting like we have, we can pretty much offer any opportunity that can be offered in a public school setting in the state of Kansas. So on the backside of that sheet of paper is kind of what, what I refer to as a little bit of trivia. So just some unique things about our size and scope. 10 million square feet of school space, which you can imagine has its challenges, especially with some of that being older aging infrastructure, which is part of why you had on your consent agenda last month for our bond issue that will go to the voters in February. A few other things, just as a district as a whole, you've probably also heard in the past year, we have 88 school buildings this year. Last year, we consolidated four elementary schools and two middle schools. Our enrollment declined pretty significantly at the 2021 school year, the COVID year. We were fully remote in our secondary schools and lost a lot of student headcount that year, about 2,100 students. We never right-sized because of SRF funds, we were able to kind of keep some things going for a few years after COVID. And so last year, we, we right-sized. And so, last year, we, we right-sized and decreased some of our capacity by closing some school buildings. And the offset of that, which is another relevant thing for you all, is that we were able to fill a number of teaching vacancies in our, in our school district. So, I know we have record vacancies across the state. But by closing four elementary schools, we took those teaching staff that were in those schools. We moved them, we gave them extra days to pack their things, we gave them a retention bonus, and we filled the other positions across the district that have been, some of which had been open and vacant. So, this past year, usually, we bring in about four hundred, four hundred and twenty-five new teachers every year. This past year, we brought in a hundred and seventy-five new teachers. So, we had, we didn't have nearly the turnover that we normally have in the number of vacancies because of the school consolidation. So, a hundred and seventy-five new teachers is still a lot, still larger than a lot of our school districts across the state of Kansas, but much better for us. So, anytime I talk about our district, I talk about every student, and we have every kind of student you can imagine in the state of Kansas. We really, we really emphasize every single student being successful. So, this isn't about a certain demographic, a certain type of student. You know, in my, my kind of regular speech, I talk about the three-year-old who's, you know, disabled in a wheelchair, all the way up to the eighteen-year-old heading to Princeton. We have every, every student in between. Like I said, rich diversity, every opportunity you can imagine, and a really incredible school district. I feel honored and humbled to, to lead it. I've loved it, it's a, it's a great, it's a great mission that we have in Wichita, and we've made some really great headway, which I'll share with you guys next. So, our Board of Education, Wichita Public Schools Board of Education, has really tasked me, a Superintendent, with two main priorities. Academic outcomes, student outcomes, and then fiscal responsibility. And so, doing both of those things is really what, what we've been focused on over the past year and a half or so that I've been in the Superintendent chair. So, I'll share with you our academic outcomes, our strategic plan, and then kind of work in a little bit of the underpinnings of the financial, fiscal responsibilities. So, I'll pass this one out. And I hope what you see, you all are probably as familiar as anybody with the State Board outcomes. I hope what you'll see is in alignment with Wichita Public Schools, with our school board and our strategic plan, and you all at the State School Board, and what you guys are valuing and in trying to get our students to, to achieve and be successful with. So, we have three main strategic plan area goals. To summarize, I'll summarize them in general, and then I'll, I'll work through them specifically. So, our number one goal is graduation rate. If we know that if a student doesn't cross the graduation stage, pretty much all of their life outcomes are at risk. So, we know that graduation is vitally important. Goal number two is post-secondary assets. We also know that for a lot of our students, the diploma isn't enough. They need to be prepared for life, college, and career, and we do that through post-secondary assets. And then the third one is a sense of safety and belonging. We also know that if our kids aren't safe, if our kids don't feel like they belong, they're going to struggle in school for all sorts of reasons. So, those are the three big goals. If you look at goal area number one, that's graduation rate. Like I said, crossing graduation stage is really what K-12 education is all about. But we know that there has to be academic underpinnings that support that. So, if you look kind of, if you, as you go down, it starts with high school kid and kind of goes down to the elementary kid. Our high school focus has really been on ACT and ACT work keys. We feel like that is the most valid measure of academic success at a, at a high school level. So, that's what we're working towards, that's what we're focusing on at the high school level. In order to be college-ready, we know that that ACT score matters. And both, not necessarily matters for college entrance, but matters for the ability for a student to be successful once they get into college, for the rigor that comes with that. We saw a dip after COVID in our ACT scores, we've recovered that. We had about a full point increase last year in our ACT score. So, we're not quite up to pre-COVID levels, but almost there. Work keys participation, this year, we're about, around seventy-five percent, which is really significant for us. That's been an area of emphasis. So, in our district, we have juniors taking the ACT and the seniors take the work keys on our testing day that we do. So, we're tracking those. The work keys obviously goes over into the goal number two for post-secondary assets, you know, and them getting a silver or higher on that, too. At the middle school level, we know that the research tells us that if a student is not able to be successful in Algebra I, that's a lot of time a gatekeeper class for high school success. So, that's why we're focusing on eighth grade math and making sure every eighth grader is ready for Algebra I to be successful when they get to that at the high school level. So, our former strategic plan didn't really have much of an emphasis on math, so there's some infrastructure we're having to build. We passed this plan last December, so we're really in the first year of this plan, so working on middle school math. Then third grade literacy, again, we know all the data on third grade literacy. If a student isn't reading at grade level at third grade, lots of things in life can go wrong. So, our intentional focus in the science of reading and letters training for all of our elementary teachers, we've, we've really, really invested in, in that. And all of our, all of our current employees at the K-five level will have Letters Volume One and Volume Two completed by the end of this year, end of the school year, which is significant. So, we've seen a lot of the gains in the Volume One materials that we do, on the phonemic awareness and the phonics. We hope to see the gains in the comprehension in Volume Two stuff that we're, we're implementing now, too. And then, to support all of that is highly trained staff. So, filling those vacancies, creating teacher pipeline, we're working on some, some things with WU and WSU Tech to create internship opportunities for our high school kids that are in the teaching pathway. They can be hired on as pairs with us, then go onto WSU Tech to get their associate's degree, onto WSU to get their degree, in a seamless path that we can create a teacher pipeline that we know is not there, right? We know that there are not enough people going into the profession, that we've got to support that. For goal number two, that is life, college, and career readiness. As we did our strategic plan, the, the constituents, the stakeholders wanted life to come first when it came to how we were wording this one. That if kids are not ready for life, then they're not gonna be successful even with a diploma. So, how do you get kids ready for life? You guys were talking about it just a few minutes ago, with having a part-time job, having a high school job, work-based learning, all of those sorts of things. Our belief is that post-secondary assets help students get ready for life, right? That's, that's kind of our assumption. And we also believe that the more post-secondary assets a student has, the more ready for life they are. So, if you play a sport, that's a good thing, right? If you're an Eagle Scout, that's a good thing. But if you're both of those things, that's even better, right? If you also have a work-based learning opportunity, if you also have college credit, and then you have a credential, and, 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 the more of those you have, the more well-rounded you are and the ready you are for life. So, that's why our goal, which was a little bit of stab in the dark, because we don't, we don't have the traffic, tracking infrastructure yet for how to keep track of all these post-secondary assets. We're working on that, that's part of kind of this year one goal, is we believe if we can get fifty percent of our kids to five or more post-secondary assets, that they will be that much more ready for life. Hopefully, we get a hundred kids there, but because we don't have the tracking and the infrastructure, we weren't sure exactly where to set that goal. So, as you work your way down at high school, post-secondary assets, that's really that goal to feed the, the big goal for, for that. If you look at middle school, what we, what our goal is in middle school is a hundred percent of our eighth graders have a five-year plan. So, this is IPS, right? This is Zelo. This is, you don't have to stick with the plan, but you have to make a plan. What are you gonna do with your future, where are you gonna head? And then how do you align your high school coursework to that goal, to wherever it is you want to end up? College, career, whatever that is. So, Zelo is our eighth grade plan. At the elementary level, our goal is kindergarten readiness, ASQ, right? Again, aligning with the State Board outcomes. We know that the more likely, if, if a student is ready for kindergarten, they're more likely to be successful, especially with that third grade reading goal. So, that's why we've, we, we reached, I need to say it right, bronze on early childhood. We got the Star of Recognition, we celebrated that at our board meeting last, last month. And so, we're really putting emphasis and putting some infrastructure in place for that to support our early childhood folks and kids. Third goal area is really a little bit simpler, but it's all about safety and belonging. Again, you guys were just speaking about school safety, we know that's on top of mind for a lot of our parents, not just at school, but really everywhere that kids go. So, making sure we have a safe and welcoming environment, but also really that sense of belonging. We've put a lot of infrastructure in place with Esser Funds for restorative practices and creating schools that have a culture of belonging, so every kid feels like they belong and they're connected to the learning that's taking place. And we hope to see those outcomes come through in better attendance. We had some really good gains in attendance last year, with just being intentional about working with families. But we hope to, we know, we know we're not there yet, we're not to pre-COVID numbers as far as chronic absenteeism or average daily attendance, which we feel is maybe a better indicator of the health of a building as far as attendance goes instead of chronic absenteeism. So, we're tracking average daily attendance and working to focus on that. So, I'll stop at that point, any questions about our strategic plan that, that pop in anyone's head? And then we'll talk graduation right here in a second.
I wanted to ask you how you did so well with letters compliance. What's the secret there, what would you tell other districts to do?
We used a lot of the Esser money that we had, I mean, that's really, we paid stipends. So, we paid, we paid teachers for time outside of the contract in order to, to get it done. It was, it was somewhat optional, but I think the teachers knew this is a good time to do it, right? While there's, there's an opportunity here. We, we embedded this year, we did that with Esser Funds prior to this year. This year, we've embedded it in the contract day, and really, that's the main focus of our PD that we do during the day with teachers, is to, to work their way through letters. So, yeah, the, the, the support from the state level has been significant, too, in making that happen. But ongoing training will be needed for new teachers, right? That's, that's always one of the challenges of implementation cycle, is, you know, you may have a good push at the beginning, but how do you keep it going? So, we'll, we're creating plans for that, to make sure that we can do that, too, so.
Great.
Good question.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How, I was curious how the public support with the moving of the, closing of the schools and then moving the teachers around. Were they pretty supportive of that as far as the?
Of course, you know, like, our goal number three is safety and belonging. We went, we ask every principal to create this safe space of belonging. And so, our schools, our principals have done that. So, to take a, a school and undo that, and, and we really did undo it. Every one of our school buildings ended up, you know, sending kids to, to different places, they weren't all able to go together. So, of course, that's hard, you know? I, I think the public did understand on kind of a logical, practical level that we have, we have more schools than we need. And every kid can benefit, I mean, in a, in an ancillary way. When, when we have a full-time, highly qualified teacher in every classroom, as opposed to long-term subs, that benefits every kid. And so, I think everyone understood, you know, we need, we need to do something. But for the people that were directly impacted, it was, it was very challenging, so.
So, it sounds like communication, you did a fairly good job of communicating with everybody on that.
We did, yeah, I mean, I, I think as, as good as you can. I mean, you, you, we're, we're not immune to this. I mean, you know, school districts, big and small, all around Kansas, have had to make these hard decisions, and they're almost never popular. But we did, we did try to work as much as we could with families to help them understand the why and make sure that we brought them along, so.
I went to several of the community meetings in the buildings that were closing, and they were, they were handled very well.
Well, thank you, yeah. Again, it's never easy, but change is hard for all of us.
Very emotional, but there was a caring attitude that came from the staff, you know, both at district level and at building level. And I think it had a lot to do with the trust.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it was hard, but folks trusted you.
Yep.
Dennis.
Kelly, I just was so intrigued with your CTE, your workplace, the Dillon store. Would you give us just a little bit of a picture of what happened there, because that was, that's an amazing place.
I think I have a picture here. See, I got, I got ahead of my slides, so, let me go back to this one. So, what, what Dennis is talking about and Melody before I got started, you know, said, I should, I should come down and take a tour. So, any of you guys that want to come down and take a tour, we would love to have you in Wichita to show you the great things that we're doing. But we, about twenty years ago, the district purchased a Dillon's building that was closing down right next to North High School. And it sat vacant for a while, and when I came on to the district in 2020, it was kind of a blank slate. And Dr. Thompson said, hey, let's, let's put something with CTE here in this facility. So, working with WSU Tech, we've created what we call Future Ready Center, which is for juniors and seniors in high school to get workforce-ready training. And that, that building there is for aviation manufacturing. So, as a, as a junior in high school, they come in and take a core class, everybody starts in the same class. And then there's three pathways that they can go from there. One's in automation, one's in sheet metal composites aviation, and one's in maintenance. And so, working with Textron, working with Spirit, and hopefully Boeing in the future, we're really aligning with what the community needs in order to help our kids to be ready for their future, right? To be future-ready, that's the whole point of our strategic plan. So, they take the core class, they pick one of the three pathways. They get trained in, you know, all sorts of high-tech equipment that I don't know what it all does, but it looks, it's, it's cool and flashy, and the kids, the kids love it. And then their fourth quarter, or their fourth semester is work-based learning. So, they get on-the-job training. We actually have a number of kids last year that just graduated in January, or in December, just to go get a full-time job at Textron, you know? Why, why do an internship when they want to hire me full-time? And these are good, high-wage jobs, right? These are not minimum wage, these are, these are jobs of the future and jobs that our community needs. So, we have one for manufacturing and one for healthcare. The healthcare track has a EMT, a CNA, and a pre-RN. And then we have one for IT cyber that's coming online next year.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that you are sort of ahead of the game. I mean, we've, we're talking about this stuff, partnerships and stuff, and it's, you know, and it's in action there. And that's, that was really a good thing to see. So, anyone that wants to go to Wichita and kind of see how it can be worked, you know, working out, that's wonderful, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, yeah. Well, let me talk about graduation rate, this is, this is the highlight of the day, so. Highlight for me at least, I mean, your board meetings have lots of highlights, I'm sure, but this is the highlight for me. These are, these are unofficial, you know, the graduation rates, right? They are technically a hundred percent at this point. But based on our upload of the, of the graduation rate thing, upload for kids that we did at the end of October, this is where we stand. So, we have, we have been intentional with Wichita Public Schools about focusing on graduation rate. And if you look at the front, front side of this, in 2018 was when we began our focus, and in 2018, we're seventy-four percent graduation rate. This year, class of twenty-four, we went up five percentage points, and we are up to eighty-four point three percent of our kids graduating. So, that helps all of us, right? Because we have about ten percent of the Kansas enrollment in our Wichita Public Schools. We graduate, I think we graduated over three thousand students in Wichita this year, which was a record for us as far as the, just the number. And you guys know how the cohorts work and all of that kind of stuff. One of our strategies has been to really be diligent about the cohort, especially with, you know, these graduates were freshmen in our remote year. And we, we, we had a lot of shifting and shuffling of kids around. So, really, tracking those graduates, or tracking those kids down and finding them and making sure that if they, if they did transfer, that we got that recorded and all that kind of stuff. But even more so than that, we've put some intentional programs in place in order to support every student. And you can see that paying off in this data. With Esser Funds, we added a role, a mentoring role called a Future Ready Advocate. And those Future Ready Advocates really came out of us being on, on the list of significant disproportionality for racial, racial discipline actions. But we know that discipline actions and graduation rate are one and the same, right? If you're kicked out of school all the time, you're not gonna graduate. And if you're able to stay in school, you're more likely to graduate. So. So we did specific mentoring with them. With ESER money, we added a thing called senior liaisons. So this is a mostly retired administrator who does this kind of part-time, but essentially their job is to take the kid, the list of seniors who are behind on credits and hound them, right? Constantly, literally knocking on doors, calling families, where are you at? Get this, get this class taken up. Go do summer school, go do night school. We added two new night school options. We graduated 22 students out of the juvenile detention facility in Sedgwick County. They are ours to, even though they come from all over the, all over the state, they are ours to, to teach because they reside in our district. That's more graduates than probably the last 10 years put together. We intentionally put mentors and advocates there in JDF to help every kid that hopefully will change their life and change their trajectory and they can turn their life around. But having that diploma will make a huge difference in their life. So if you look at the demographic breakdown, you know, we break down pretty much every demographic group that we have enough to count for a subgroup. And you'll see things like, you know, the, the African-American male and African-American female graduation rate outpaced the district graduation rate. So in, in many ways, there is not a racial gap anymore when it comes to graduation rate, which is significant and important for, for multitudes of reasons. The other one that we, we really put emphasis on, if you flip to the back in the bottom right corner, is that foster care rate. We realized in Wichita, you know, there's, there's hotspots around the state that are resource-rich when it comes to foster care. So Topeka, Lawrence, Kansas City and Wichita, we have a lot of beds. So we end up getting a lot of foster care kids in Sedgwick County. But Topeka and KCK, they were, they were outpacing us with foster kids by a long ways. They're graduating, you know, foster care kids at 70, 80% and we were down, you can see it, 50, 40% range. So again, with intentional investment, by putting the right people in the right places and giving them the resources, by offering things like night school, working with the Child, Wichita Children's Home to, to meet the needs of every single kid, you know, you see that giant 22% increase in, in foster care graduation rate. So lots and lots of things to celebrate on this. But what I keep telling my board is we can, we, with resources, we can do this, right? With strategic investment, it's possible for us to, to achieve our goals, right? We can't do everything, but we can do, when we get focused, we can really do amazing things for kids. And this is evidence of that. Can't do it for free, right? We had to hire people and pay people to be strategic and to, to, to lean into some of these kids. But it, it does pay off, right? Resources matter. So back to kind of my board's marching orders of academic outcomes with fiscal responsibility. Fiscal responsibility doesn't mean cut, 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 taxes lower, you know? It means that we might need to reduce some things in order to invest in others, in order to achieve our goals. So lots of cool things, lots of good news to celebrate as far as this graduation rate. So I'll pause on that one and see if you have any questions just specifically to graduation rate. Well, thank you, yes. And I'll, and I'll share that with our team because they did all the work, as you know. I mean, they, they made it happen, so.
Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello. So question on the Future Ready Advocate you said you hired with ESER funds. Are you able to keep them?
Yes. So, and that, that's a bit of the story of school closures from last year. We do, we do a very robust building needs assessment, right? The, the process is required by the legislature, but we, we do every site council and we create this big packet of information. It's actually online if you want to go see it. And then we come out with themes and, you know, 82 out of 88 buildings said attendance was an issue. 80, you know, 86 out of 88 said that we need more mental health supports, things like that. And we're kind of making those numbers, but they were in that ballpark. So as we knew we needed to make reductions, we had a strategic decision to make. Are we going to keep all of these buildings open and cut, cut staff or come to these, cut some of these ESER programs? Or are we going to listen to what we heard in the building, building needs assessment and keep those supports, knowing it's going to be other hard decisions that we have to make? And so we were strategic. We, we knew that in order to balance the budget, we're going to have to do one or the other, something had to give. So we chose to close the buildings. We cut $27 million out of our budget, but we did that in order to save some of these other programs. So the ESER, the Future Ready Advocates, they're built into the budget now. Our additional child study team, folks that we hired with ESER money, they're built into the budget now. So school psychs, social workers, counselors. So, you know, in the future, we'll continue to try to invest in that. We didn't expand any of those programs, but we, we were able to keep them. But it was, that was one of those choices we had to make when it came to balancing everything last year.
One more, Ken. So something you said about the whole strategic part and being focused made me think of KISA. So could I get your personal thoughts on the new KISA plan we have going?
My new, my personal thoughts on the new KISA plan we have going? So, so prior, prior to me working in the, in Wichita Public Schools, from 2014 to 2020, I was in Clearwater, a district of about 1,100 students, a 4A district, 3A district. And I was principal there and then assistant superintendent. And in smaller districts, the principals do KISA, right? And in Wichita, our principals don't even know what KISA means. I wouldn't go that far, but, but it's very, very different, right? Very, very different. That smaller districts don't have the resources, don't have the manpower, so you have to wear a lot of hats. So I was pretty intimately involved in kind of the first change of KISA when, when it went from no child left behind to the five-year plan. And then when I got to Wichita, helped a lot in my three years as CTE director with, with everything up to that point. I'm honestly not as familiar now with what the changes are, but I do think it makes sense. The changes that, that have come do make sense as far as helping to support districts. I, I think, and this is just my, Kelly's personal opinion, not Wichita Public School superintendent opinion, but Kelly's personal opinion is one of the fears of accreditation is it can become kind of just a dog and pony show or just a, you know, let's roll out the red carpet and show you all the shiny objects and not really get into the data. We didn't do that at all in Clearwater, but we had support from a service center that really helped us with that. So I think the new cycle really helps to, to avoid that, that it's kind of a constant ongoing instead of, you know, once every five years, here's our, here's our big plan. I do think in Wichita, for a district our size, we are incredibly aligned with the state board outcomes. And I think that, I mean, that's obviously been intentional, but we have done a lot to make sure that we're in tune with what's going on here in Topeka, KSD and all of that to help support kids. It is good for kids though, right? Regardless, if you change the state board outcomes, I would believe an individualized plan of study is good for kids. So I do think a lot of where the outcomes have come from are really rooted in what Kansas kids need. And so I think it makes sense to align it at a district like ours, so, yeah.
Betty.
Thank you. Most of the subgroups on your, on the graduation sheets are represented racially. So explain the category subgroup military for graduation.
So those are, that's a good question. Those are students whose family have identified as being associated with the military. So as, as you know, with some of this data, it can be tricky. Homelessness is another one. Homelessness is essentially a self-identified state. It's not, we, we don't know necessarily if a kid is homeless or not unless they tell us. So military is the same way. So these are military-affected families that we have, we have a decent amount of. Derby is close by. McConnell is in Derby's district. So percentage-wise Derby has a higher percentage of military families, but we, we have a considerable number. So these are, these are students in our system whose parents are involved in the military.
I, I wanted to, wanted you to identify and explain that simply because of, of the decrease in number.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know the number, the quantity number off the top of my head of that for our district, but it's, it's, it's not a huge group, so.
Anne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really hated to lose Kelly from our tech ed committee, but, because he was the tech ed coordinator before superintendent, but it's really, I think, going to pay huge benefits as you have that focus. Because I know the board, we were, when we met and did our little thing, you know, workshop, whatever, a couple of months ago, there was some discussion about whether or not we should have, and I don't remember if it was a mission or vision, career exploration versus career training. And I think from what you're seeing, career training is essential in high school. I mean, not just take a peek at it, but actually get your hands in it and do it. Cause whether you're doing automated manufacturing or woodworking or whatever, that's career training. But I'm just really thrilled about everything you're doing. So if you haven't been down to see those centers do it, but also on graduation, looks like your Title VI people are doing an amazing job with the Native American students, but Dow, they, they just do great.
A big jump in that group too, of Native American students.
Anyway, thank you for all your work on that.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, about, one thing I didn't mention on our district at a glance is the 80% for a reduced percentage. So four out of five of our students are living, growing up in poverty. We, we did, I didn't bring this today, but I could send it to you if you want. We did a breakdown of all the high schools in Sedgwick and Butler County. And it is significant when you, when you put them next to each other, that, that some of the high schools and some of the other, you know, suburban districts are 14%, 22%, you know? Our, our, our highest, our, our lowest number of poverty in one of our high schools is 60% at Northwest High School, up to 90% at West High. So nine out of 10 of our high school kids at West High School are experiencing poverty. So opportunities or challenges are opportunities, right? So these are opportunities for our kids. But I, I bring that back to the CTE centers. We had one of our kids, it was a North High kid who went through the Future Ready Center for manufacturing and got a job at, at Textron at semester. And probably, probably the best-paying job his family has had, to be honest, at 18 years old. So our, our principal at the Future Ready Center asked him a couple of months after he had the job, he said, so what was it that got you ready that, you know, that prepared you for, for having that job? Thinking that it was going to be, well, I learned how to run the CNC machine or, you know, is the plasma cutter or something like that, or the OSHA 10 certification that really helped open a door? And you know what the kid said? He said, I wouldn't have had the confidence to even apply for that job had I not done this, right? So in changing trajectory of kids and changing kids in poverty, it isn't that they can't, but sometimes they just don't believe. And so to create a space where a kid can believe, hey, I know how to do this, I can do this. They, they interview with Textron, they go tour at Textron. So they, they feel like they kind of know the employer. And Tex, I'm using Textron as example, but we work with multiple manufacturers and aviation groups down in Wichita. But I, I think it's really critical that for our kids specifically, that these create a pathway to an opportunity that they wouldn't have even believed that they could do, so.
And I'm thinking, I can't remember now if it's, I always get it mixed up, Spirit or Textron that does the summer internships where they actually hire the kids, not just to make planes, but to do accounting and marketing and, and really show them what a career looks like and make some money out of it.
Yeah. And I think, as we know, as labor's been short all across everywhere, our employers in Sedgwick County have figured out, if we don't engage, even down to sixth and seventh grade, then we're probably not, we're probably going to lose out. So we have great relationships with, with all sorts of industries down there, but.
Cause I think that program started out with a handful of kids and now it's like, I don't know, huge.
That's the Textron program, but Spirit does it also. And yeah, we continue to expand that every year. So we actually, for the Future Ready Center manufacturing students, they have their own interview for that internship. And 100% of our kids that do the Future Ready Center get an internship if they want it, because they're that much more ready for that experience than any other kid out there.
You guys have teacher externships too, which we had talked about, like, man, I'd really like to get that going statewide. I don't, I don't, I've got six weeks left, might not happen, but maybe I'll work on that in my retirement. But anyway, you might mention that too. I think, I think that's incredible to get the teachers out in the summer to go do some things.
Yeah. And that, if, if you're, if, I think you're familiar, but if you're not, you know, Textron does this themselves, but we also do it with Perkins money in Wichita Public Schools where we pay a teacher to go essentially work for a couple of weeks in the summer to do an externship. A lot of our culinary teachers do it, our fire science teachers do it. They, they do it to keep up on kind of the skills and, and the workforce, but it also helps for them to come back to the students that they work with and say, hey, you know, this is what, this is what they're saying, right? That if you don't get it off your phone, you're going to be out the door, right? So it's the, it's the work, the, the life skills, the soft skills that get influenced in that too, so, yep. All right. I don't know how much more time I have. I have a little bit on the bond issue, but if that is relevant to you all, I'm open to answer any questions for that. And if not, you can just take the sheet of paper with you, so.
We do still have a few minutes. You are absolutely fine on timing.
Perfect. Well, a couple of things I'll lift up that align with both state board outcomes, our strategic plan and the other things we're talking about. You know, we have, we have a huge size in Wichita. We have, again, like I said, the biggest district, 10 million square feet. And so when we talk about numbers, it's hard for people to understand really big numbers. But when you divide it out by the number of students we have, some of our numbers aren't nearly as big. So we have a bond issue that's going to be voted on in February, $450 million, which is a huge bond issue. But Valley Center just passed a bond issue and when you divide the amount of their bond by the number of students they have, it's about double what ours is. If we pass this, our debt ratio per student is still going to be by far the lowest of any, of the top 10-sized districts in the state. So 450 million is a big number, but for our scale and our size, when you divide it out, it really, it really isn't huge based on our need. Some of the exciting things that we're looking at with this though, as a new early childhood center, we have kind of, we have early childhood in schools, pre-K, both at-risk pre-K and special ed pre-K. And then we have a standalone center for pre-K and then we have parents as teachers over here. So we're going to put it all into one place and we're going to put it in the 67214 ZIP code, which is there by WSU, one of the most impoverished ZIP codes. I think it's the third most impoverished ZIP code in the state of Kansas. So the idea being if we create accessible early child, early childhood education in that neighborhood, again, that can change trajectories long-term for kids. We know that every dollar spent in early childhood is a dollar that's the smartest investment we can make. Spending dollars later becomes more expensive, but early on, we can really make an impact with kids. So new early childhood center and then a new Future Ready Center for the construction trades. So like I said, we have one for aviation, we have one for healthcare, we're bringing on one for IT cyber. And then the other one that we've heard a lot about is we need more kids to be trained in construction trades. So again, they'll start with a core class and then there'll be an HVAC track, a plumbing track, an electrician track, and then an energy track for those kids to get ready for, for life, college and career through that. The plan also has more school consolidations. We, we would build three new schools and create or close four schools and so create bigger, bigger neighborhood schools, still neighborhood schools, bigger neighborhood schools. This will feel different though than the consolidations or from the closures from last year, because it will be really consolidating two buildings into one for the most part. So teachers and students won't be as disrupted as they were. Creating a plan for the next five to seven years really helps us to have a better strategic outlook on where we're going and where we're headed. And then a couple of other things that we're planning to do is get out of some administrative buildings, so non-attendance centers to consolidate those, just to save money on overhead, to put our alternative programs into a newer, better space so that that, we can consolidate some resources there. We have two-day schools, we have a high school day school and a middle school day school. We put those under the same roof, just to save money on overhead and things like that. So fiscal responsibility and academic outcomes, again, as part of the plan and that will go to the voters in February. So I didn't know if this topic was relevant at all to you all, so I thought I would at least bring it up and then answer any questions you have on that. I could, I could probably talk all day. We got all sorts of stuff going on in Wichita Public Schools that are awesome and great. But if there's any other questions about anything else, either things I've touched on or anything else you'd be wondering about, I'd be happy to, to answer those, so.
Board members, any more questions? I want to encourage everybody to take you up on the offer to come and visit. I, I kind of wondered as, as you started talking and as we began to go through the sheets, I thought, would I recognize being? sheets, I thought, would I recognize, being from Wichita, graduated from Wichita School, would I recognize the district at this point? And I think the answer is yes and no, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of really great things happening, and you deserve a standing ovation for this. The, the graduation numbers are just amazing.
Yep.
So, bravo. Job well done.
Thank you.
I said...
Thank you, Betty.
Ann raised her hand, so calling in.
Oh, just had a question. The Integra plant, is that happening?
That's above my pay grade to answer. I, I don't, I don't know.
Don't know? I just wondered if the funding ever came through for it, because that was a new chip manufacturing plant.
Yeah, I, I...
Very exciting.
I believe most of the chip money has been allocated.
Oh, okay.
But they haven't been told no, and it hasn't all been allocated.
Okay.
But, now that we're past the election with new administration, I don't know what, what it means for that, so.
Thanks, thank you.
Good question.
I do want to ask a quick question about the Future Ready Advocate. Would you say that that helps with the load on school counselors, and those folks that are handling schedules and trying to help kids through those last couple of years? Is, is that apples to apples, or not at all?
Yes, it is. And our counselors, I think, you know, do a, do a good job of, you know, keeping up with kids. We are, we're probably double what the, what the recommended ratio is, as far as students to counselors. I think we're about 1 to 400, and the, the national recommendation should be 1 to 225, probably, and that neck of the woods is 250. So they've, they're busy, right, and they've got a lot going on. So this is a, a tool to, essentially, the Future Ready Advocates have a caseload, so they have a targeted caseload of kids that they can work with and connect with, connect with families, in a way that a counselor couldn't, just because of the quantity. And this is, you know, like I said, we, it came out of significant disproportionality data with suspension rates with African-Americans, African-American male students who are disabled. But really, it's broadened under that. That isn't the only students that they work with. We have some that work in the middle school, some that work at the high schools, and really it's an overall connection with school, positive academic identity, having somebody that you know you can, you can go and talk to if you need to, but also is gonna kind of track you down and hound you if you aren't keeping up on what you're supposed to. They did a, a really robust credit analysis, transcript analysis, too, because what we realized was, and if you've ever worked in a high school, you know about these kids. There are kids every year that are a half a credit away from graduating, and they just don't, right? For whatever life gets in the way, all sorts of circumstances, but it, it happens, it happens all across the state. And so, to have somebody say, to, you know, chase you down and say, "Hey, all you need to do is this one online class," right? "That's all you need, just get this done." We have a cool story of a, one of our kids at our day schools, they were doing night school, they didn't have a car, and so their buddy was, was bringing them every night to night school, and they realized that the kid that was giving the ride wasn't gonna graduate either, and needed two credits, and they said, "Hey, you get in here, what are you doing? You get in here, too." Both of those kids walked across the graduation stage in May, right? So, some of our kids just need an adult to care, right? They need an adult to say, "Hey, let's go." We have great families and a ton of good parental support in the district, but some of our kids, you know, when you have 600, 800 kids that are in foster care, 800 to 1,000 students who are experiencing homelessness, right, there's significant challenges and barriers, that some of our kids just need a little bit of extra, they need extra support to get there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't see any more questions, I think we'll let you off the hook for today, but...
Anytime you want me, I, I love talking about the district, so happy to be here today. Like I said, yeah, coming down to Wichita and visit. Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, board members, we've got consent agenda, if I can find my agenda. No break for you, sorry. We'll power through. Well, somewhere in here is my agenda. We have C and D pulled from consent. Michelle, did you just want to, do you want to vote on each of those separately?
Unless anyone, thank you, Madam Chair, unless anyone else has any discussion they want to do, they can just be voted on together.
Together? Okay, is that all right with everyone? Ann?
Yeah, the FBLA one concerns me. I mean, it's our job to, Randy Wright, to find and fund the coordinator. I mean, FBLA's a big thing.
And I noticed Natalie Clark just won.
Yes, so, we take a look at all of the Career and Tech Ed student organizations, and then we contract out to, who will actually be the advisor for those sort of programs. So that's, this is the request to go out for proposals.
So it's huge. I mean, FBLA, if you've been to the state contest in the spring, 1,000 kids come in, kind of trash the Expo Center, but, you know, so it happens when you put 1,000 high school kids in one building, but it's an amazing event, and FBLA is a great organization, so I'm, I'm just curious if, if there's an issue with it.
I don't have any comment right now, unless we have a, we can maybe spend another afternoon talking about it, more discussion on, on different programs and grants that we do for things. I don't think, right now, you're not gonna have, we're not gonna have time to spend on that.
Okay. Natalie, since you're in the room, do you want to, would you tell the board, just briefly, if we were to not pass Item D, what that would mean?
Sure. So, the state FBLA advisor organizes the events for the students who compete in the regional competitions, as well as the state competition, and accompanies those students to the national competition, those students who qualify. So, they work with the board, and they work with the advisors, the local chapter advisors, and the students. So, they facilitate the state FBLA organization.
So if we were to vote this down, they would not be able to issue the RFP, is that what would happen?
Right. The contract with our current state FBLA advisor expires June 30th, so we're asking to go out for, continue finding an individual who would be interested, or the same, so that they continue with FBLA going forward.
Okay, thank you. All right. I would be ready for a motion. Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus C and D.
Thank you, Jim. Who was that second? I got a couple down there, Betty. All right, Jim, Betty. So voting on consent agenda minus C and D, all in favor, raise your hand. 10-0, motion passes.
I just had a question on F, remember yesterday? Pulled F, it was an, it was a, we're not voting on that.
We had a question about the numbers.
So F, it's, it's a notification from the legislation, and I have conflicting reports online from the national, and then what we receive for ACES exclusively. So is there any way, when we get a notification, can we have somebody from legislation so we can ask those discrepancies? I've asked them in person, different ones, and nobody can account for that, or tell me why, why the discrepancies are. So, whoever approves that, or whoever's supposed to be notifying the Board of Education, since those go into a school where we, obviously the state has some reporting on that, because I've seen the numbers, if it's, if it's an educational deal, maybe we should have somebody from legislation, so we can ask those questions, because obviously, we can't answer those questions here at the board. We're just being notified of those.
So, what I can do, Michelle, is try to take your request and see if we, I, I don't know, the national organization, I'm, I'm not aware of the national data, or wherever you got that.
It's out there, we can look it up.
Sometimes, I, I know that national people collect data in strange ways, and then, you know, but I don't, I don't know that. But what I can do is follow up with you, and then send it out to the board in Friday notes.
That, that would be great, because there's, it's, it's like, it's like 12, maybe 1,400 off.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's huge.
And as you mentioned, in Item F, the law says we're to notify you when a new one gets approved, so, but I, I'll be happy to follow it.
That would be great, just to know why there's such a huge discrepancy in the numbers.
Melanie?
Okay, Jim?
I move that we approve consent agenda out of C and D.
Is there a second? Dina? Any discussion on C and D? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is 9-1, motion passes. Moving on to the Chair's report, I don't have anything new for you today, other than, I, I already mentioned earlier that Jim and I will be meeting with K-BOR this afternoon, so, to be continued. Turn it over to Mark.
I'll reserve mine by email, I'll notify board members of any updates or remarks by email.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports?
I just want to report on, I, I attended the migrant, whatever you call that, for, for Betty.
Interstate migrant council?
That's it, that's it. But what amazed me was the number of people that we interviewed that were participants that had been migrants, that had become very successful citizens. And, I've said this many, many times, when you, knowledge really messes up your prejudices. So I learned so much, but what I found out, that this is not a cost, it's an investment. Because there were so many people that we talked to, that had gone through the program, that had become successful citizens, and were lifelong tax-paying citizens. And I found that to be very impressive, and it was extremely, I learned a lot, and I'm thankful for Betty for allowing me to go at her place.
Thank you, Jim. Betty? Yes?
Actually, it's a committee announcement. I had asked for the, the nice policy manual to be placed in your folder, where it would remain, but enough board members expressed interest in taking this, so if you would like to keep this, you may do so, and Deborah will put a new one in your folder for next month. The one next month is to remain in your folder, however. That's it, thank you.
Don't take it home. All right, thank you, Betty, and thank you, Deborah. Jim?
The KSB conference is this weekend, and we have traditionally been available, in an informal session, as part of their agenda, so Saturday morning, I'm not real sure exactly what, what, what time?
11:30.
11:30, okay. And in Wichita, Century 2, I believe?
That is my understanding.
Yeah, so if you can make it, great. If you can't, oh, you'll miss out on a good time.
Agreed. We've, we've had a great conversation there in the past. Did you have something, Dennis?
I just had a question.
Question, okay.
Jim, on the migrant, were these legal or illegal?
All of them that identify were legal.
Okay. Just had to ask.
But I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you another example. This was informal, because there were other conventions there, and so we had to meet with other people. I met with one family, they had 12 kids, they were legal, but the 12 kids, they were migrants when they were kids, all 12 of them are now professionals, and the two of them that were there owned counseling companies. They started, one of them started with one, and they, she lived in Maryland, she had about 30 counseling, and she hired her sister, who had now developed about another dozen in Texas. So they were wildly successful, all 12 of them were professionals, and they were all legal.
Yeah, knowledge is helpful.
And I'd like to just tack on to that, because the distinction between migrant and immigrant, and they can be, those are the ones that move around for jobs, for the migrants, so the majority of them were born citizens here. The majority of those are...
Born here.
Yeah, and not, yeah, natural, and not, not just immigrating families. And I just wanted to add on, because the way that that is addressed, and, and the energy, the level of commitment that the educational staff has to providing education for those that are in that situation, is just amazing. So, thank you.
One other thing, my mother-in-law was a migrant, when she was a kid.
Thank you, Betty, and, and thank you for serving on that committee. Thank you, Jim, for going to that meeting. All right, we're ready to act on board travel requests. If you have any little things, you can send them to Deborah, unless you're planning a big trip, speak now. I should mention, go ahead, Commissioner.
No.
I'll, I'll, I'll do this for the Chair, because I said to her, "Some of you are over budget, and we're about to end the year," but then some of the, the people that were under budget said, "Does that mean that I get to go over budget?" So just, just look at your, your travel, and know that the, the year is ending pretty rapidly, but we have to stay within that budget, because we, we'd, we'd have to take that off somewhere else in the agency, in order to fund the State Board, because the legislature doesn't give us more money, because we go over the budget, so.
Not exactly a slush fund available there, yeah. So please watch your travel. Dennis?
Just want to make a statement about, I, I, I found, you know, I tried to look at my schedule, and, and visit a district, if I'm heading, you know, to another part of the state for some reason, for, to visit a district on the way, and, and that's been a good experience for me, to just, you know, set that day aside and, and plan that. So that's, that actually happened to me on one of my charges, so it was, I think, a good way for me to spend the day, and visit a district, since I'm going right past them.
Awesome, love that. All right, can I have a motion to approve board travel? As presented in your packet, Kathy? Is there a second, Jim? All in favor, raise your hand. 10-0, motion passes. Any future agenda items? Kathy?
I would like to ask for a, and it can be next month, it can be January, but some kind of a conversation about the receive item one month, the action item the next month, and overall procedure, policy, just thoughts, to just kind of sit in that a little bit, of how we're working that, how we maybe could be working that. The ERC thing kind of brought that way up for me, so just to have a conversation built into the agenda would be great. And then I would really like a discussion in the next few months on assessments, kind of breaking them down, looking at the numbers of elementary, maybe, or even looking at third grade across the state, like, just some different, instead of the whole smashed together, maybe elementary, middle school, I don't know, just...
Deeper dive on assessment?
But kind of looking at that, a little more parceled, than just the whole big picture.
Some more granular look at some, okay.
Like how's our elementary doing compared to our middle school, or maybe even third grade with the reading scores, I don't know, just some different ways to look at it, to, to do some comparisons.
Okay. Michelle?
Madam Chair, I think we discussed, Dr. Watson was gonna maybe give us some information, if we were to, the state of Kansas were to apply for a grant, maybe a federal grant, and how, when those, that money comes into the state, what are the requirements, compliance, and how, how that might affect coming into a school building, how that might affect other children, for the one that it's coming in for, or the group that it's coming in for, and how that would affect other children within that school, as far as compliance goes, the law, everything that goes along with that federal, that federal money that's coming in. We were looking at, we were looking at possibly the, whatever forms they have to fill out, whatever, just maybe one or two, or based off of maybe CTE, or you could take the federal food program, and getting grants for that, and how that affects the local economy, how that affects the locality of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Dina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we've talked about AI before, and I was reading the other day that there's starting to be lawsuits filed because of the use of AI, and the, by students, so that there's not a clear delineation between the use of it, what's appropriate and what's not. So, I'm just going to encourage the encouragement of having some sort of policy developed, so that, or suggested policy, so that none of our school districts end up with... districts end up with that kind of a, of a lawsuit, because it's now on the East Coast, but that soon migrates its way to the middle of the US. So, just thinking maybe to be proactive, we might start looking up.
Thank you. Dennis?
One of the things that was brought up had to do with...
For Betty.
I'm sorry, that you said Betty. Forgive me. Are you Betty?
Dennis and Betty.
Okay. Just a quick statement. We had that Citizens Forum presentation yesterday asking, I don't remember exactly what a request was, but the Kansas Food Action Network to be included in, to couple it with our wellness and nutrition program. And I just, I thought it was a well-intended group action. And so, I would, I would just encourage us to look at that as adding that to our, to that department, whatever, as, as report, anyway.
That would be your farm deployed.
I'm sorry?
If you approve your farm deployed.
Okay, okay, okay.
And Betty?
Thank you. One of the things that, and, and, Randy, you probably could cover this for us, but when a system was not being, receiving accreditation, it was mentioned about the, the technical support that KSD offers. And so, I just want kind of an overview, how you actually would prepare for that technical support, how many people would have to wear a second or third hat in order to go out and assist those districts that, that are in that situation. Just kind of an overview of how that works, and, and how you would prepare your team to go out to offer that service.
Okay. Thank you all. I don't see any more hands raised in the room or in the app. So, with that, I believe that we are finished for this month. We adjourned. Thank you.